You ready? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the public board meeting, the final public board meeting of the Halt and District School Board for the 2022-2023 academic year. The date is June the 21st, and tonight we have, I think, almost all trustees in person, so I'll just take roll call to find out. Trustee Ahmed, he is here, I'll come back to him later. Trustee Amos.
I am here. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Trustee Baxter.
Hello.
Trustee Ahmed.
Yes, good evening.
Trustee Oliver.
Good evening, everyone.
Trustee Bryden.
Present.
Trustee Collard.
I'm here.
Trustee Gray.
Here.
Trustee Zhang.
Good evening.
Trustee Daniele.
Thank you, I'm here.
And Vice Chair Rocha.
Present.
Thank you very much. Director Innes, can we just check in on staff, please?
Thank you very much, Chair Shalwar, and we have a full slate and complement of staff to support the meetings tonight.
Thank you very much. Trustee Gray, would you like to make a motion to go into committee of the whole private session, respecting tonight's property matters, negotiations, and that's it?
Yes, I would, thank you.
This meeting will not be open to the Public Pursuant to Education Act 207, Section 2. Trustee Collard, would you like to second that?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Is everyone ready for the question? Are there any objections to moving into private session? Seeing none, we are now in private session. Thank you very much, Summer. And if everybody can please ensure they're logged into Questron, please.
And welcome to the final public board meeting of the Halton District School Board. The date is June the 21st, 2023. I would like to welcome everyone in our gallery who is joining us. Thank you everyone for coming. Although most of us are here in person, I think we only actually have one person joining us remotely because I just see one P on the board. That makes me think that, I know we have all, there are two, we have all 11 trustees along with our two student trustee, trustee Regero and trustee Wang have joined us since private. All 11 trustees were here for the first roll call that we did before private session. And Director Ennis, I'm pretty sure all the senior team were here as well.
Thank you very much, Chair Shalworth. Yes, good evening, everyone. We do have a full slate of our seniors team here tonight to support the meeting.
Wonderful, thank you. And so to start this evening, trustee Amos will be honoring the land.
Sorry, my computer timed out. Thank you. Halton, as we know it today, is rich in history and modern traditions, among the First Nations and the Métis. From the Anishinaabe to the Adirondack, the Haudenosaunee, and the Métis, these lands surround the Great Lakes, are steeped in indigenous history. As we gather today on these treaty lands, we have the responsibility to honor and respect the four directions: land, waters, plants, animals, ancestors that walk before us, and all the wonderful elements of creation that exist. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation for sharing the traditional territory with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we are now up to the agenda. Trustee Bryden, would you like to move a motion to approve the agenda this evening?
I would.
Thank you very much. And trustee Ahmed, would you like to second that motion?
I second that.
Wonderful. Is everyone ready for the question? Are there any objections to approving the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. So in relation to our agenda this evening, I'd like to check if there are any declarations of possible conflict of interest. All right, seeing none again, we are now up to item 2.0, which is our delegations and presentations. And we will start with the Inspire Awards. And I will pass it over to the chair of the Inspire Awards, trustee Gray, and trustee Ahmed to lead us through the presentation.
Thank you very much, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. An Inspire Award is given to an individual or group that is formally or informally associated with the Halton District School Board, who support our students and their achievements through exemplary caring, initiative, innovation, and creativity. Congratulations go to all of our Inspire Award recipients this evening for supporting, for your supporting and promoting student achievement and well-being in the Halton District School Board. A special thank you goes to all of the folks who have worked to put this award ceremony on tonight. And so without further ado, I would like to call on trustee Xing Zhi Zhang to join us at the front here. And would Christine Fleming please come forward? Christine Fleming is a teacher at Paul A. Fisher Public School. She goes above and beyond every single day for her students. Christine is a respected, hardworking teacher who is spoken highly of by all parents and students. Her caring, calm nature allows her to communicate well with her students. She engages them daily with fun and Her caring, calm nature allows her to communicate well with her students. She engages them daily with fun and creative ways of learning. Christine is respected in her field, she motivates her students to succeed, and she is caring and committed to making her students happy while teaching the curriculum to the best of her ability. She is a strong believer in communication and continues to let parents know how and when things are changing and happening within her classroom. Her strength and commitment to learn so much about one of her students' chronic illnesses is inspiring, and for that and so much more, she is deserving of an Inspire Award from the Halton District School Board. Congratulations, Christine. I'd invite trustee Amos to join us front and center, and at the same time, would Kristi Peterson please join trustee Amos? Kristi Peterson is the principal at White Oaks Secondary School, and she has been an inspiring leader for the last six years, first as vice principal and then as principal. Kristi greets all students as they enter the school, holding the door and smiling and speaking to many of them, and there are almost 2,400 students at that school. Kristi has led White Oaks through some of the toughest times. As a new principal, she is, she was placed in charge of the largest, most diverse school in the region and in the middle of a pandemic. She showed leadership for staff, students, and the community. It was under Kristi's leadership that the schools started having weekly communication to parents and guardians. Kristi has set an example for equity and anti-racism work at White Oaks. When a teacher started a book club focused on how to be an anti-racist, she not only agreed to purchase books for as many staff as needed, but she also joined the club because she saw the importance of that special learning. In every interaction with her, it is clear that student success and well-being are her top priorities. Kristi is not only a wonderful leader, but she's also a wonderful human being. Her warmth and tenacity will be missed as she moves on this year to another school. They are lucky to have her as their leader. Congratulations. Chair Shuttleworth, would you join us, please, and welcome at the same time Nancy and Maureen and all of the folks from Halton Food for Thought. I can't read my own handwriting, that's terrible. These three individuals are in executive positions with the Halton Food for Thought. And the Halton Food for Thought team continuously supports the students of Halton Region. Their mandate of no student goes hungry at school is one that they take to heart, working diligently within the schools to support local volunteers and programs. By providing healthy options to all students, they ensure that students are able to perform to the best of their ability. The Halton Food for Thought team has always supported students, but over the past few years, they have gone above and beyond. During the pandemic, they arranged to have food delivered to students who were in need. Not only did they arrange for donations and organize volunteers, but they also were the first ones there, filling the snack bags and doing the work that needed to be done to ensure that all students were supported. This year, as things slowly returned to normal, the team was determined to see that the food programs returned to all schools. The guidance that they provided was invaluable, as was the hands-on experience and practical work. Halton Food for Thought is a part of our community and as such, make sure that all students feel that they belong. There is, excuse me. There is no stigma in using any of the programs provided by the Halton Food for Thought. Their dedication to all students of Halton shows in everything that they do. The amazing Food for Thought team genuinely cares about the well-being of students by finding new ways to provide healthy food within schools. And that, in doing so, they support student achievement. Their hard work and willingness to always go that extra mile for the students of Halton Region is a true inspiration to all others in the board, and for that, we are truly grateful. Thank you so much for all that you do. Trustee Baxter, would you join us? And at the same time, would Julie Malbury join us? Julie is a teacher at TA Blakelock High School, and she is the staff supervisor for the Wellness Club, which recently put on the Wellness Fair. Julie worked nonstop to make this event a success. She used her lunch break to work with students on promotion and creating props, connected with teacher and student volunteers to set up, supervise, and clean up the event, and collaborated with multiple community partners that came to the event. The Wellness Fair took place on May 3rd to provide wellness to TA Blakelock students with booths from 15-plus community organizations to provide resources and volunteer opportunities to students, a raffle table, and a wellness activity area after getting a grant from the Halton Learning Foundation. Julie supports the TA Blakelock community with the Wellness Club by providing a fun and fruitful experience for everyone. She goes above and beyond to support our local community, and in doing so, she inspires everyone in the club to have a very positive impact on the school. Congratulations, Julie, for this then. Who's that up there? Trustee Ahmed, would you join us, please? And at the same time, would Justin Dai please come forward from Tiger J Singh Public School? Justin goes above and beyond for his students, his coworkers, and students that he coaches. He is an incredibly caring and compassionate teacher in a self-contained learning disabilities classroom, and his students truly view him as an amazing role model. Justin conducts himself in a manner that allows the students to have the perfect amount of support while maintaining high expectations. He frequently spends his own time helping his students problem-solve, self-regulate, adjust social behaviors, as well as he takes the time to engage students in games and activities of interest to them. Not only does Justin have a positive impact in his own classroom, he coaches multiple teams at the school each year. The students who participate on the teams Justin coaches also benefit from the amazing role model that he is. Justin encourages his players both on and off the court. He always takes an interest in how those students are doing academically and socially, and offers support to them and to their teachers. The impact that Justin has had on his students this year will last a lifetime as he has helped transform them into responsible, respectful leaders. Justin, congratulations for that. Trustee Oliver joins us now center stage, and would Katie Andro please, from Pilgrim Wood Public School, join her as well? Katie is a teacher at Pilgrim Wood Public School, and she's a fantastic teacher. She's kind and supportive of all of her students. She has a great sense of humor, and she makes math fun for her students. Her patience and enthusiasm for teaching inspire her students to be the very best that they can be. Katie is always ready to help any student emotionally, academically, and in anything else that they may need. She works hard to make each lesson, assignment, and task engaging and informative. She inspires her students by her excellent leadership, her skills and values, and the Pilgrim Wood community is better off thanks to her. So congratulations so much. And now trustee Baxter, would you join us for this special award presentation to Rose Altamorano Sanchez? Rose, please come forward. And we do invite the parents to come forward as well to take some pictures. Rose Altamorano Sanchez is a student at Pine Grove Public School. She is a very responsible and caring friend who always puts her peers' happiness first. Whenever there's a spill, she's one of the first people there to help. Rose is a great listener and always finds a way to combine everyone's great ideas to make one big fantastic idea. She can be shy when she first meets someone, but when she has to do a project with one of her classmates, she treats them with the utmost respect. Rose is incredibly honest, and she can always admit when she's done something wrong. She's part of the Mental Health and Well-Being Club, and she was showing, she has shown incredible bravery as she delivers announcements in front of the whole school on behalf of the club. When someone else is doing the announcements with her, she always makes sure to cheer them on. Rose is a wonderful addition to the Pine Grove community, and she is more than deserving of the Halton District School Board's Inspire Award. Congratulations, Rose. Chair Shuttleworth, would you join us, please, and Suzanne Pierce, please? Suzanne Pierce is an executive assistant at the JWS Singleton Education Center. She was nominated by Liz Kirk, the placement coordinator at Brock University, for her incredible work to support Liz in her role. Over the past two years, Suzanne has consistently gone above and beyond to search for and confirm a teacher candidate placement in the HDSP school at the last minute. Whether it's a rarely offered tech education subject or a specific grade level or location that's needed, Suzanne will explore every possibility and try to make something work, no matter how challenging the request. She is always positive, helpful, and willing to put in the extra effort required to, to request and confirm a placement for students from Brock. Her kind and caring attitude makes her a pleasure to work with, and her ability to get things done efficiently is always appreciated. Suzanne has had an immense impact on hundreds of teacher candidates, and especially on all of the schools, teachers, and classes that these candidates have been able to contribute to. Through her hard work, the teacher candidates have had specific requirements and accommodations met, flourished in their placements, and learned from positive experiences of mentorship and support in their journey to becoming a teacher. So congratulations Suzanne for all of your work and support. Trustee Bryden, would you join us, please, and would Tracy Peters from Aldershot School join us? Tracy Peters is a volunteer at Aldershot School. She has demonstrated exemplary leadership in organizing and managing Aldershot's nutritional breakfast program. As a parent volunteer, she has had a significant impact on the student community throughout the school year. Tracy and her team of volunteers have provided ongoing education and healthy development to students while delivering daily healthy food choices. She strives to ensure that students start their day by fueling their mind and body with the most important meal of the day. Tracy has and continues to take an active role in the healthy success of all of the students she oversees every morning within Aldershot. The Aldershot community is so grateful for her time, energy, and dedication to this program. Congratulations.
So with that, we came to an end of our Inspire Awards that are being presented at the board. And the following awards will be presented at the location of the recipient's choice. I'll read out the name and the, and the location. Anita McDougall will be receiving Inspire Award by trustee Joanna Oliver at Emily Carp PS. Jackie Spilstra will be receiving from trustee Oliver again from, at Pilgrim Wood. And Dave Jowett will be receiving the award from trustee Amos at Montclair PS. Glenda Shroud will be receiving the Inspire Award from trustee Roshia at New Central PS. Carol Kelly will be receiving award from trustee Roshia again at Maple Grove PS. Wanley will be receiving again from trustee Roshia at Joshua Creek PS. Hayden Student Council staff advisors Alneem, Kate Power, Nicole Morrow, Rhiannon Campbell will be receiving the awards from trustee Xin Zhang at Dr. Frank J. Hayden Secondary School. Jasmineka Doshinovic will be receiving the award from trustee Zhang at Charles Arb Pedo in Public School. Jason Vindich will be receiving the award from trustee Zhang at Clarksdale PS. Jennifer Springman and Kristen Parker will be receiving the award from trustee Zhang at Clarksdale PS. Nancy Monday and Shannon Smith will be receiving award from trustee Zhang through the inter-office mail. Pamela Blair will be receiving the award through trustee Shuttleworth at Nelson High School. Tanisha Forbes-Bonci will be receiving award from trustee Ahmed, that is myself, at PL Robertson. So that is, that is the end of our list, and congratulations to all the recipients.
Congratulations to all our Inspire Awards. Thank you so much for coming. It always is the wonderful start to our board meeting, so thank you, everyone. You are welcome to stay if you would like to. Okay, we are now up to our trustee, student trustee report. Trustee Regero and trustee Wang. I don't even think I need to ask because I know you have a report being your final board meeting. Would you like to share your report with us this evening?
Yes, we would. Okay, good evening, everyone. It's a bit of a bittersweet moment for the two of us presenting our final student trustee report and being here in this board office one last time, but we're super excited to share our final updates on some initiatives that we're wrapping up on and reflections on all our work and experiences this past year.
So to begin, trustee Wang and I, following months of planning, hundreds of applications, and many interviews, were very, very proud to host the first student equity committee last Monday. As an initiative that was started by trustee Vigilant Kara Mbau almost two years ago, it was great to have around 40 students for the first time, especially from grades four to 12, of all different backgrounds, lived experiences, and identities to come together to talk about equity and inclusion within the HDSP. Now, our incoming student trustees will be facilitating the committee for the upcoming school year, but we would like to thank system principal Walker and our staff advisors, Navi Manners, Kalud Aga Khan, Tanisha Forbes-Bonci, and Mina Johal for all their support this year.
Um, as well, trustee Regera and I have finished visiting 15 of 16 high schools. We only have Aldershot left to go and are currently drafting our secondary school outreach report for students, the community, and the board to read. This report will be highlighting each student's student government, each school's student government, the work they've done, and how they empower student leadership. It will also include recommendations that we have gathered from talking to students at these schools about how the board can improve the student experience and where they would like to see a focus on. We aim to release this report in our year-end message that will go out to all students, hopefully on June 29th.
In addition, trustee Wang and I also had the wonderful opportunity to update the introduction to the Student Senate video with the IT Communications Department. So time permitting, of course, we're just going to highlight, if possible, a little snippet of the clip that we recorded, so I'm going to pass it over to general manager Cora to play it. Impacting HDSP students from accessibility
Burlington.
... and responsible individuals capable of taking on large-scale projects, efficiently completing tasks, and willing to commit five to 10 hours per week representing Halton youth.
The Student Senate meets on a rotating basis once a month at the JW Singleton Education Center in Burlington, HDSP Welcome Center in Milton, or virtually if required, to ensure equitable access for students to get involved. A meeting schedule is set up at the beginning of each school year.
Student senators discuss a wide array of topics impacting HDSP students, from accessibility needs to environmental or mental health initiatives. They have the opportunity to share the voice in their school. In fact, Student Senate has helped influence decisions ranging from Canada's In fact, Student Senate has helped influence decisions ranging from Canada's first climate emergency declaration, HDSP period poverty initiative, and the student mental health support within the HDSP.
The Student Senate provides additional opportunities to share student perspectives through Student Senate regional meetings, the HDSP Student Equity Committee, and HDSP Mental Health Task Force work that operate alongside the Student Senate. Student Senate meetings are generally once a month, lasting between two to three hours, with breaks in between to chat and eat.
I think we're forgetting an important piece, Cindy.
We are, Ethan.
So there was the infamous "we get pizza" shot from a video that is, I think, over five years old, so we were very, very grateful to update it, and now it really reflects the modern identity of Student Senate with the subcommittees and the Equity Committee. So you can find the full video on the HDSP YouTube channel, published on June 19th, titled "What Is the HDSP Student Senate?"
On that note, the Student Senate Newsletter, which is our final initiative of the year, is currently in the works and we aim to have it sent out to all students in our year-end message alongside our secondary schools outreach report on June 29th. We can't wait for everyone to be able to see some highlights of the amazing work of our senators and also get to know our senators themselves. Thank you to our newsletter team, Alan, Talene, and Tricia, for putting it together.
Now, as student trustees, trustee Wang and I have tackled all sorts of areas this year based on what we've heard from the students we represent. From school policing programs, to raising consent awareness, to looking at reporting systems, we've had a very productive year and we are very proud to have advocated for students in all these areas. Additionally, we would quickly like to highlight some of the aspiring and inspiring work our senators have done this past year. So our Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee began an equity toolkit focused on providing students and educators with a list of resources to consult when dealing with harmful language. Our Learning and Achievement Subcommittee created an elementary orientation slide show for grade eights during their high school orientations to help them prepare for high school through student perspective. Our Mental Health and Wellbeing Subcommittee started a CYC resource database for students. Our Environmental Subcommittee spoke at the Directors Panel series regarding environmental awareness and leadership. And lastly, our Indigenous Perspectives and Awareness Subcommittee held a school fundraiser for Indigenous children.
In terms of regions, our Oakville Senate held a joint environmental cleanup with the Environmental Subcommittee and organised a fundraiser for the Haltons Women's Place. Our Burlington Senate held a Burlington donation initiative with Aldershot High School collecting over 120 pounds of food and Frontenac Public School collecting over 220 items. And as well, our Milton and Halton Hills Senate built a plan surrounding an in-person northern forum for this fall with a new theme and keynote speakers and uplifted awareness around student trustee elections with a record-high candidacy from Milton and North Halton and a record-high voters as well. Additionally, our Senate representatives on HDSP's Mental Health Strategy Advisory Committee, their names are Talene, Nurah, and Sophia, and as well our Environmental Leadership and Sustainable Committee, their names are Kalina and Budav, have consistently brought back lots of learnings and opportunities from their meetings, so thank you so much to them for their work on these committees. And we are so proud of all of our senators and students on our Senate subcommittees, regional meetings, regional meeting teams, and any initiative that our Senate has worked on this year for all their hard work despite the challenges. They're all such great leaders and I know Senate will be in great hands next year. Thank you so much for making Senate super fun this year.
So, on a personal note, as we close off our report, I would like to acknowledge and thank everybody who was a part of this journey that made this year incredibly productive, impactful, and memorable. I'd like to acknowledge Dr Frank J. Hayden's principal, Rasa Baxis, for providing me with countless opportunities that unlocked my passion for student voice and advocacy. I'd also like to mention Superintendent LaHatt, who was one of my earliest board contacts. And as soon as I met him at Hayden, his energy, his insights, his passion inspired me to take my work to the board level and run for a student trustee. Now, looking back to September, I remember being filled with so many ambitions and goals in the year to support HDSP students. I'd like to acknowledge the senior staff around the table who made all these dreams a reality. From superintendent Fowler during the police liaison sessions, to superintendent Proto with the staff and PD and the leadership conference, and of course Superintendent Taha with student reporting systems. I'd like to thank each and every one of you around the table for listening to us and replying to our countless emails. To Director Ennis and Associate Director Salmini, I'll always remember our first meeting in August where trustee Wang and I laid out our master plan and you both were on board right away. I'm genuinely honoured to have worked under your leadership, which centred student voice at the forefront and inspired so many to embrace their identities. To the trustees around the table, I'd like to thank you for being such an inspiration throughout the year, particularly Joanna Oliver, or trustee Oliver, sorry, trustee Reynolds, and trustee Shuttleworth, whose guidance and teachings will live beyond my time at the HDSP. To the HDSP staff who supported our vision, of course, the Senate staff advisors, vice principals Jarvis, Alexis Stevens, Nick Leek, Graywell, and of course, Ms Patello, genuinely some of the most passionate people I've ever met regarding student voice, and I genuinely could not have done it without you. And special thanks to HDSP Student Mental Health Lead, Michelle Bates, who supported us all along the way. And as we close off, I would like to thank the students, of course, who believed in me and gave me this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I wouldn't be here today without their support. And each and every one of those 67,000 students pushes me beyond every day what's typically possible to achieve in one year as a student trustee. But last and definitely not least, I would like to thank my co-trustee, trustee Wang, who shared the weight of representing over 67,000 students throughout the year. I could have not have asked for a better co-student trustee. She's someone who inspires me to push beyond my limits and discover my true potential. I'll miss our late-night Google meets working on Student Senate projects, our carpool rides to the over 16 high schools, which are very far, formidable board meeting where she coordinated my girlfriend's proposal. So I'm so incredibly grateful that I got to work with such a fierce leader, who's been my teammate, but above all, a really, really good friend. So, thank you so much, trustee Wang.
Okay, so I want to say first of all a big thank you to Ms Patello, Ms Stevens, Ms Gruell, Ms Nick Leek, and Ms Jarvis. I am so grateful to have worked with this team of amazing women who wholeheartedly love student voice and made Senate possible this year. Thank you to our trustee mentor, trustee Oliver. She's the reason why I was able to feel confident in this role, and in just one year alone, she has helped me with so much more, from university applications to making sure I had rides to meetings. I couldn't have asked for a better mentor than her. Thank you to Director Ennis and Associate Director Salmini for their kindness and wisdom, making me feel inspired to do the work I wanted to do this term since the very beginning. As Ethan mentioned, our very first meeting as student trustees was actually with them and they were very on board with all the crazy ideas we put out, so thank you so much for that. And thank you to everyone at the board, the trustees, superintendents, system principals, IT and communication staff for supporting so many of our initiatives. I've worked with so many of you this year and it is nothing short of incredible witnessing you bring all of our crazy ideas to life. And thank you to the senators and students for believing in me and giving me this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Meeting and talking to students has been the best part of this role. I've grown so much through every conversation. I've opened my worldview in ways that would not have happened without this role. And I also want to give a shout-out to my teachers, principals, and peers at Oakville Trafalgar for being so supportive and understanding throughout my journey as a student trustee. And finally, I want to say thank you to my co-student trustee, Ethan Rogero. I can't put into words how inspiring it is seeing him be the leader he is. He is somebody who genuinely always sees the best in every person in every situation and he always pushes me to become somebody who is as positive as he is and can look to the future as positively as he does. I'm going to miss bumping into him on Google Docs at 2:00 AM, our Austin adventures, and going on school visits together where we really like to see the secrets of every single school. And I am so, so grateful to have had him as my co, to have had him as a teammate, and to have had him as, above all, a friend. The board has been so lucky to have somebody like him serve in this role and Vancouver is so lucky to have gained a great one for the next few years. And lastly, I want to end on a bit of a personal note. Ever since I moved to Oakville in grade three, the HDSP has been a second home to me. School often fed me in the mornings and made sure I had enough energy to keep me going for the whole day. School gave me the opportunity to fall in love with sports. I've played everything from basketball and soccer to track and field in badminton, even when I didn't have the access to these opportunities outside of school. School brought my family together and supported them, even as immigrant parents who were not confident in English to be fully involved in my education. And school pushed me to become a leader, with my high school principal and teachers being the reason why. I was encouraged to sit in this very seat that I'm sitting in right now. At school, I felt nurtured, inspired, seen, and heard. The changes made in this very room, every meeting, and in this very building every day leaves a mark on the stories of every student who walks into an HDSP school. Your work inspires students like me to play sports, to pick up an instrument, to learn to love learning, to know that there's no age to being a leader, and to dream of what they can do with their future, even if their life circumstances hold them back from doing so. You change lives for the better and I know this because you have forever changed mine. In my last year as a student in the HDSP, I am so incredibly grateful to have been able to represent students and give back to the community that has given me so much for the past 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you once again, and for the last time, we are happy to take any questions.
All right, so looking to the speakers list, we have one person on and I do have a couple of things to ask after, but I will turn it over to trustee Oliver. Go ahead.
No, if you have questions, you go first, I'll go last.
Okay. Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much, Susan Chair. I'm kind of emotional having to speak here. That was incredible. But I want to make one mention here, and I think the legacy that the two of you will leave behind is your elevation of student voice within this board. I think that that is the piercing thing that you accomplished through your past year, and I know that everyone in this room will be forever grateful of that because all that you've done remind us in everything that we do, have we included student voice or how can we look to get more student voice involved? And that will be your legacy, so I thank you so very much. I'm turning into a Kelly Amos here.
It's not a bad thing. It's not a bad thing. Emotion is okay. So as this is your last meeting, and I know Joanna has some things to say, I just want to quickly, on behalf of the board, take a moment to thank you for what you've done. As trustee Gray said, and I know that trustee Oliver is going to say as well, you have gone above and beyond in engaging the students and the Senate in the reinvigoration of in-person meetings, because we've been through a couple of years where we haven't been able to see each other and it's been so wonderful to watch how you really have grown and created that opportunity for all students, north and south, to be able to have a voice at the board. So on behalf of the board, we want to thank you. Please don't clap yet because I know trustee Oliver has some things to say first.
All right. Change my glasses. Trustees Wang and Rogero, this is a bittersweet moment. Our final board meeting of the school year, the end to our regular trustee connect meetings, Senate prep, and our flying text messages and rapid problem solving. It was a great honour and pleasure for me to work with you both as your student trustee mentor. Just as you started your high school career, the pandemic struck and that changed your academic and personal experiences drastically. You were inspired to put your names forward for the position of student trustee, and it is clear that the previous three years helped to shape and define how you decided to fulfil your roles. Mental health and wellbeing, equity and inclusion were your top priorities, and you embraced all the opportunities to be allies and advocates for all HDSP students. You both started the year with a number of issues that you wanted to tackle and work through with the Senate, and by the end, I believe you achieved that and much more. You continued to promote the role of the student trustee in the Senate, reaching out to students, providing great leadership, and guiding by example. You ensured that all senators were supported in the role, built strong leadership and connection to their own school community, and were able to bring student voice through you to the Board of Trustees and the senior administration. This was very apparent in the reports and questions that you brought to the board table and the provincial advocacy that you engaged in. You supported the Senate so that it jointly and with each senator individually could help to support the HDSP multi-year plan, while also giving other students the opportunity to be involved, to advocate, and to support their peers. You provide a great leadership and guidance and empowered them to carry out their roles to the best of their abilities. The farewells and accolades at the end of the final Senate meeting were all a testament to your leadership, inclusivity, and kindness. You were not afraid to reach out to staff and to look for ways to share your insights and seek opportunities for collaboration. You championed various issues, supported your peers through crisis and celebrations, and brought forward well-rounded perspectives. And the two of you worked amazingly as a team, quite impressive teamwork. It is hard to believe that we are wrapping up this school year, and for you, that means moving on to post-secondary education. I know that my fellow trustees join me in wishing you all the very best in your future. Please do stay in touch, we would love to hear about your new adventures. Congratulations, Cindy and Ethan, on a tremendous term as student trustees.
Thank you, guys. Okay, we are now up, we're going to try to speed through till 8:30. So we have one presentation for this evening, which is by Gabby Escheveria and Tammy Hardwick. They are going to present "Sharing Our Work Connecting to the Multi-Year Plan." Welcome, ladies.
Thank you very much. So I will take a moment and I'll just bring the presentation up on the screen. All right, I'm going to get us started. So I know that you've already taken the time here to do the Honoring the Land and the Territory Acknowledgement, but I just wanted to bring that forward as an acknowledgement. And I'm going to leave this up here and just take a little bit of a moment to introduce myself, for those of you who may not know me, and it's just also a part of our practice. So, Ani Kinueya, Gitchan Endum, Tammy Hardwick Indishnakas, Adawa Anashnabe Endau, Shishagwaning Menodum Menasing Indondjuba Makwendore. So I said hello, everyone, and I'm very happy. And I think, you know, the student senators, you know, they're so inspiring and I think that that also makes me happy and thinking about the work that we are doing and how it's all about students. So, you know, just reflecting on that and bringing that bit of excellence moving forward here within our little presentation today. So I'm also the instructional, one of the instructional program leads for Indigenous Rights in Education. Very happy to work with a brilliant team of educators and staff with all that we do. So what I've put up here on the screen before you is a map that was co-created. It was actually a collaborative effort, one that was built through consultation and collaboration with the LTAP department. So that, a fantastic team who has been engaged in that ongoing consultation process. And what you see where it says 1.1 overview is actually that connection back to another great accomplishment for us as a school board and with our department of the Indigenous Education Policy. So this is something that we often accompany with a bit of learning that goes along with understanding the land acknowledgement. So that overview is really talking about, you know, the lands that we're situated on and understanding that Halton is completely within the Mitchisawgi Anashnabek territory and ancestral lands and title lands. And they are the original people of this territory and they possess those distinct and inalienable and inextinguishable inherent rights and jurisdictions that are self-determined by that nation. So that's a little bit of education about where we live. So when we think about that policy, it really is an educational piece in part, and it also helps to inform the work that we do in our school board. So when you look at that map, you can see that bit of like an orange shadowing area, so that's giving you that idea of where the Mitchisawgi territory is. And then that green section is looking at Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation Reserve, so where the reserve is today. And then, you know, you can further reflect and analyse when you look at this image, and you can see that that is really showing you a bit of that process of colonisation, right? So you're actually visually seeing where, and remembering that the Mitchisawgi continue to hold this ancestral treaty and title lands, but have been moved to ancestral treaty and title lands, but have been moved to the reserve itself, right? So that's just a little bit of learning about this map and a little bit more of a connection to land acknowledgement and something that we share. And I'm just going to pass it over to Gabby here for a moment.
Thank you, Tammy, and good evening, everyone. And we'd like to also acknowledge and thank each of you for inviting us to and centering Indigenous voice on National Day for Indigenous People. So you heard a little bit from Tammy in reference to the land and territory in which we work, and my part is going to be a little bit of an extension of that and also model for you how we work in consultation with the Michisawgi and the First People that are living on this territory. So you've heard Tammy introduce herself in her wholeness, and I'm going to do the same. So Justica Gabriella Wa Chanaral Markitatwa Kuyasuyu Hayaya Pachamama Hayaya Achanchila. I would like to also extend a Happy New Year to all of you, because from the part of the world where I'm from, which is the Andean region with the northern part of Chile and northern part of Argentina, it is the new year. So Happy New Year to all, and maybe you're a little happy because it's also the first day of summer, so it correlates, right? And so we're all very ready for all the beauty that the sun and the earth provide for us at this time. Another reason why we introduce ourselves in the wholeness is to give respect to our communities. But the thing that we like to model when we work with educators and in schools and students and families is that we also engage in a deferral process, which is an honoring of Indigenous rights. And so you heard, you would have opened with the land acknowledgement, and we thank you for that. You would have heard Tammy talking about the Michisawgi. And I'm going to say that I also defer to the treaty partner, but as well as Anashnabek people and First People that are on this territory. While I have indigeneity, I am from the South. And so the work that we do is about the impact of colonialism on the First Peoples that are on this territory. And one example that we usually share is our part of the world was impacted. The impacts of colonialism are common for many parts of the world, but in particular, a distinction is that from the part of the world where I'm from, students, Indigenous students would have been and families would have been impacted by mission day school, but not residential school. And so now, I hope that provides you with an example of the work that is particular to hear is also dealing about the impacts of residential schools on the First People of this nation. So we do have to cater and be responsive to what's happening here on this territory. I think we're okay to move to the next slide. So I'm just going to ask Tammy if she wouldn't mind. Okay, so I'd like to just acknowledge again, all of the tremendous work that's happened from the board. We thank the Board of Trustees and senior administration team and all the workers of HDSP for following and working towards the multi-year plan that happens to have, as you know, a distinct pillar dedicated for Indigenous perspectives and awareness. So for our work, there are, we believe that there is a connection to learning and student achievement for Indigenous students right across the board. Although there are distinctions and things that we need to pay attention to, these five commitment areas are linked together by a thread. So they intersect, but also they stand alone. An important achievement this year is that we, for the first time, because we've had resources to expand our department, have been able to focus entirely on Indigenous rights and education in its own department, still under the umbrella of the portfolios of Superintendent Petco. But we are able to tease out the distinction and service Indigenous rights from human rights. So the Universal Declaration of Indigenous Rights also outlines the important rights that must be upheld. Indigenous peoples are seeking their rights to be upheld, and while the work of equity can intersect and benefit Indigenous peoples, especially when there are positive outcomes, it's still important to differentiate that Indigenous peoples do not fall under the equity banner. I'm going to ask Tammy to go to the next slide, please. So this slide speaks to our graduation rates produced by the Ministry of Education, a document that's titled Strengthening Our Learning Journey. It is a third progress report in response to the Ministry of Education's Indigenous Education Framework that was initially rolled out in 2007, and it followed a cohort of students and produced these graduation results for 2018. So as you can see, First Nation students graduate approximately 30% less than all other students, for Métis students, approximately 12% less, and for Inuit students, approximately 20% less in comparison to all other students. And the reason we share this is because this is actually connected to the department's work. We find these results pretty urgent, and therefore, we are really diligently working at, in collaboration with all other departments, at improving these results for Indigenous students. This graph is from the Student Census, the Halton District School Board Student Census, produced by Dr. Rosanna Biseglia. She's the manager of research and accountability. We've asked her permission to borrow this slide. And what it speaks to, it provides information on students who do not have the required number of credits, so 30 credits, to graduate at the end of their grade 12. And you'll see a little note that says this graph captures that for grade 12 students, Indigenous students are two and a half times more likely to have an insufficient number of credits to graduate from high school than their presence in HDSP student population would predict. And so again, that parallels the provincial results that we've seen, and it speaks to needing to prioritize student achievement and improve the success, student success, and environmental school conditions for our Indigenous students. And I'm now going to hand it back to Tammy.
All right. Thank you very much, Gabriella. So I put forth this slide here. I know that it's following one where we're really thinking about the work that we need to do as a department to address what is happening with the data, because it's really about, you know, this is about students, right? It's not just numbers, and we want to bring forth those positive outcomes. So I've connected it here, because when we think about today, June 21st, this is a day where diverse First Nations, Métis, and Inuit partake in ways to observe this day, whether it's through ceremony, coming together as community, or however else each particular nation and person self-determines how they observe the solstice. But today is also about, with the name of National Indigenous Peoples' Day, is about celebrating that beauty of brilliance, joy, and excellence of Indigenous peoples and the diverse identities that are contained within it. And I think that we really try to bring this out in all of the work that we do as our team. So one of the things that we do, and this is the framework of our Indigenous education policy, and it's really built around the Truth and Reconciliation Commission Calls to Action and the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples. And it calls upon us to ensure that we interrupt those harms that Indigenous students and families are experiencing. And we ground all of the work that we do, that we build with curriculum and with professional development within these two frameworks. So what I want to do is just highlight some of the amazing work that our team has been able to accomplish throughout this year. We've been a part of collaborative efforts with the School Programs Department, as well as Special Education Services, people from the corporate staff, and social workers, child and youth workers. And this really speaks to how we try to ensure that this is really about learning across the board, because we know that every sector of our education system impacts Indigenous students. And if we can provide opportunities to help all of those departments gain an understanding, then we know that we are doing our role in ensuring that we're upholding Indigenous rights and serving Indigenous students and families. And now, our team was fantastic. They do a great job in documenting their work, and this is an opportunity for you to see a glimpse into what we actually engage in. So like I said before, when we engage in all of this great learning across the system, we're really framing and grounding it in TRC and the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples. We're always, you know, taking that time to remind educators that we're thinking about Indigenous students when we're doing this work, right? Because you may not know if there's an Indigenous student in your class, and we want to ensure that we're doing our best to reduce those harms. And we also know that students are at the center of all that we do as educators and staff. And we do that to reduce harms by using anti-colonial practices. And what I mean by that is, you know, when we speak of anti-colonial practices, we're referring to ways that we can distance ourselves from colonial barriers. And in order to do this, we take an anti-colonial approach to our practices. And this involves having a deep understanding of the impacts of colonization and ongoing settler colonialism. And it's also important, you know, as a part of that, to understand the actions of past governments and peoples that have impacted and continue to impact Indigenous peoples. You know, so we think about residential schools, the Indian Act, the 60s group, understanding treaty education, understanding what has, you know, the history and ongoing impacts of missing and murdered Indigenous women, girls, and true spirit. And this is all important information for us to know, so that we can undo those stereotypes and misconceptions, and also ensure that, you know, we are undoing that erasure and highlighting that sophisticated knowledge that Indigenous peoples have. And we implement this through various pedagogical strategies that bring forward student gifts. And this could be through multimodal forms of learning, varied assessment practices, knowledge building, or thinking critically about how we need to understand the ongoing impacts of colonialism, so that we can think about how that might be impacting Indigenous students. So here is another slide that is speaking to some of the work that we've been doing with the First Nations Métis and Inuit Contemporary Voices English Course, the NBE3. So we've been in the process of rolling this out throughout, across our system, and we've been doing it systematically to ensure that we're building the knowledge of the staff within each of the schools that are on-boarded each year. And then we also build, we learn, we grow, and the teachers who are teaching the course also help to reinforce and to add to those practices, so that we can do better each year in our pedagogy and engaging students and highlighting that Indigenous beauty, brilliance, and resistance. And here are some more examples, and as you can see, students are thoroughly engaged. We're centering student gifts and student voice to guide learning. Students and staff are being met where they are at, and the learning is facilitated to build those relationships and through a co-learning stance. So our team does a lot of co-planning and co-teaching to engage staff and students through learning, through inquiry, knowledge building, and hands-on activities. And as you can see, it ends up being cross-curricular, where something may start in literacy, and then that inquiry process brings you into, could be geography, or into science. And we also leverage gifts of our team members, and we do have a team member who is also able to engage French as a second language or F I classes in the learning as well. So some fantastic work that is being done within the classrooms and with students across the system. And our team also works at engaging Indigenous students directly, offering those opportunities. So, you know, for example, the Youth and Elder Conference, students were able to attend that, as well as skilled trades conferences, looking at post-secondary opportunities, meet and greets with Indigenous students and families, and even offering workshops. And, you know, we do all of this work because we want all students within our system to be successful. We want staff to feel supported and also knowledgeable in the work that they are doing. And we want Indigenous students to be able to walk into schools and to see their identities affirmed through curriculum, because all of the work that we do is really about student achievement and well-being. So, you know, it's really about that success and building those experiences that are positive for everyone in our education. All right, me gwech. That's our little presentation that we put forward for you today.
Thank you very much to the both of you for coming and presenting. I'll look through the speakers list to see if there are any questions from trustees. Seeing none. Again, thank you so much for coming and speaking to the board. We really appreciate the knowledge that you gave us. Have a great evening, the two of you. Okay, we are now up to items under Section 3, which is our consent agenda. For approval, we have the consent agenda, which includes the Halton District School Board minutes from June 27th, and the Government's Documents Review Committee minutes from May 23rd. We also have information items, which include the order paper, the quarterly capital update, the quarterly financials as of May 31st, and the administrative procedure update. I'll put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the consent agenda and receive the information items for June 21st, 2023. Trustee Danielli, would you like to make a motion to deal with the consent agenda?
Thank you. Yes, I would.
And trustee Amos, would you like to second that?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Wonderful. Are there any items that need to be pulled for discussion this evening? Seeing no names popping up on my screen, are there any objections to approving the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved by unanimous consent. So that brings us up to item 4.0, ratification and action items for this evening, and we'll start with business transaction transacted in private session. Vice Chair Rocha, do we have any business from private session that requires approval?
Yes, we have three items this evening.
Please go ahead with number one.
All right. So the first one, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve matters from committee of the whole, private session, June 21, 2023, respecting property matters, report 23118. Anaiso moved.
Thank you very much. And trustee Baxter, will you second that motion, please?
Yes, I will.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if you can, please cast your votes. Thank you very much, and that passes unanimously. Next one, please.
All right. The second motion is be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve matters from committee of the whole, private session, June 21st, 2023, respecting property matters, report 23111.
Thank you. And trustee Amos, would you like to second that motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if you can, please cast your votes. Wonderful. Thank you very much. And that again passes unanimously. That brings us up to number three. Vice Chair Rocha?
Yes, the last one. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve matters from committee of the whole, private session, June 21st, 2023, respecting property matters, report 23114.
Thank you very much. And trustee Ahmed, would you like to second that motion?
I second.
Thank you very much. Is there any debate? Seeing none, if you can, please cast your votes. Thank you very much, and that too carries unanimously. Thank you so much, everyone. All right, that brings us up to our All right, that brings us up to our action items for this evening, and we'll start with the professionalism policy, report number 23060. Superintendent Taha and Director Ennis.
Thank you so much, Chair Shadworth. I'm going to ask Superintendent Taha to speak to this.
Thank you, Director Ennis. Good evening, trustees. Through you, Chair Shadworth, to trustees, senior team, members of the public. Before you for decision is the professionalism policy. As you're aware, trustees, the professionalism policy and the findings of the consultation process has been brought before you previously on February 23rd and March 1st, I believe. Also, as you're aware, last week at Committee of the Whole, staff and trustees engaged in a fulsome discussion in relation to this policy and how it engages other policies and legislation. Before I turn it over to trustees for any questions or comments, on behalf of Director Ennis and the senior team, I would like to thank trustees, the Standing Committee on the Document Review, did I get that right? Governance Document Review Standing Committee, all of our stakeholders for their input and their insights and participation in the consultation process. That includes obviously parents, students, school council, advisory groups, obviously trustees, and of course, our union partners. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. And before we begin the questions, I just want to remind everybody that at last week's Committee of the Whole, we had quite a fulsome discussion on this. So I will now start off with the questions on the speakers list, and that will start with Vice Chair Rocha.
Thank you through you, Chair. First off, I want to say thank you for the multiple times that you have presented at Board and the consultation that has taken place. I will start by saying that I will not be supporting this policy this evening, and here is my rationale. I think it's been made abundantly clear that we do have the policies, procedures, and regulations in place that address all forms of professionalism. And when I looked at the draft policy that's been presented, there's really nothing new. It's really a summary of everything that exists, so begs the question, do we really need this? And in my opinion, we do not. As Chair Shadworth said, at last week's Committee of the Whole, there was a very fulsome discussion as to the merits and the need for this policy. And I think based on that discussion and knowing that Director Ennis has suggested and agreed to looking at other policies where we can perhaps strengthen some language or reference different regulations that address this topic. For all those reasons, I will not be supporting the motion this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Rocha. Seeing no further questions, I'm just going to add to what trustee Rocha spoke to. And again, I am in a similar position as trustee Rocha, because I think we have a lot of policies that are already in place at the Board that we really need to focus on what we have. And rather than create a new document, which might muddy the water, we need to ensure that the language that is clear in the policies that we have to ensure that professionalism is at our schools. When I look at the feedback we received from the surveys that went out, there was a lot of asks for clarity and specificity and definitions and examples and additional detail. So with that, I think for us to focus on those pieces, using the information we have from the policy that has been looked at over and over again to add to the existing policies that we have, I think our time is better served doing that. Thank you. Trustee Danielli.
Thank you very much. I appreciate what you've both said, and I am in agreement. I just wondered if the director had anything to add in terms of your suggestions to firm up the policies that we already have.
Thank you, trustee Danielli. Through the chair, I certainly am in agreement with the proposal and direction to strengthen the existing policies and procedures that we have. And certainly, as we move forward, that is something that I am committed to doing along with staff.
Thank you, Director Ennis.
Okay, so I'm going to read the motion. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the professionalism policy appended to report 23060, and I so move. Vice Chair Rocha, would you like to second that motion?
I will second.
Thank you very much. Are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. So remember, you're voting yes if you support the motion, you're voting no if you want to not support the motion. All right, so I can't. So that does not carry by unanimous dissent. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you very much, Superintendent Taha, for the work that you've done on this policy. And as Vice Chair Rocha said, for the multiple times you have come to the Board to present to us. Okay, we are now up to item 4.2.2, which is the budget for 2023-2024, report number 23091, Superintendent Nagoy and Director Ennis. You have 15 minutes for this. So I'll pass it over to you for a quick summary.
Thank you. And through the chair to all trustees, you have seen this budget before. We've had quite a lengthy conversation over the last number of months. For the public, the Committee of the Whole on May 24th has the full discussion and presentation on the various aspects of the budget, as well as on June 9th, we had a condensed version of the presentation. There's no changes from the draft report that was presented on June 7th. So trustees tonight are being requested to approve the operating budget of 881 million, the capital budget for 108 million, as well as the in-year deficit elimination plan of almost 7.2 million. So the budget before you is a compliant budget. It's within 1% of our provincial allocation. However, it is using up to 7.2 million of board reserves in order to support various programs and maintaining some of the support we've had in place in the prior years. In Appendix D, which is the deficit elimination plan, you will notice that there are some additional supports that are being provided for remote learning, temporary reductions in some of our, just to make up the temporary reductions in some of our grants and fees, as well as a number of additional staffing proposed in the budget. And there are additional savings to be identified for above 3.2 million in the following year. And with that, I would just like to recognize the tremendous amount of work that my staff have put into this, as well as my colleagues around this table, and of course, the Board of Trustees who have been along this journey for many months, starting back in November. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Amos has a question.
Thank you through you. First of all, thank you to you and your staff for making this a compliant budget. I know it was very difficult based on the funding that we didn't receive in some areas and the deficit in other areas that hasn't come back because of COVID. I would just like to say I know how difficult it was and some difficult decisions were having made by the director and senior, the senior team. And that it's incumbent on us to now advocate with the government to try and, we've already sent the letter sharing our concerns, but we'll have a committee that will also do the same and so, which I hope you'll help with. And but thank you for getting us to the point where it's a compliant budget, and we'll still do the best we can for all students.
All right, seeing no further speakers, thank you so much. And again, I think one thing that I wanted to point out, which I pointed out at a meeting we had today, and before I read the motion, just because I look at all these great big numbers that they talk about, and when we talk about those numbers, they're so abstract. So when we're looking at what you're doing as far as fix the funding, which I think is great, is I think it's really important that we try to look at what is missing from our Board because of the deficits that we have, because of the money that we don't have? Where are those holes so that we can actually give those examples so that the government can see it and the community can as well? So I'm going to read the motion that's got some big numbers in it. So here we go. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the 2023-2024 Halton District School Board PSAB operating budget in the amount of 881,353,221, and that the Superintendent of Business Services and Treasurer be authorized to proceed with the expenditures of FUD funds as outlined in Appendix B. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the 2023-2024 Halton District School Board PSAB capital budget in the amount of 108,294,662, and that the Superintendent of Business Services and Treasurer be authorized to proceed with the expenditure of funds as outlined in Appendix C. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the 2023-2024 in-year deficit elimination plan in the amount of 7,187,878, and that the Superintendent of Business, and I lost the end of the, and Treasurer be authorized to action the plan as outlined in Appendix D. Trustee Amos, would you like to move that motion?
Yes, I would, thank you.
Thank you very much. And trustee Ahmed, would you like to second that?
I do.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Is everyone ready for the question? All right, please cast your votes. Thank you. Oh, thank you very much, and that carries unanimously. All right, that brings us up to item 4.2.3, the Special Education Plan for the 2023-2024 Academic Year, report number 23082, Superintendent Reddick.
Good evening, trustees. I'm pleased to share again the Special Education Plan for 2022-20, or 2023-2024. I'm also pleased to share that the plan was unanimously approved by SEAC on June 6th. I did share the key highlights when this last came to Board, so at this time, I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. We have trustee Collard on the list.
I just want to congratulate you for getting unanimous approval by SEAC. That's almost unheard of, and you must be doing the right things, or they wouldn't have done that, because I know that they want a lot from the plan. So the plan must be very, very robust.
Thank you.
I heard it. Thank you very much. Okay, so I will put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approves the Special Education Plan for the 2023-2024 year. Trustee Baxter, would you like to move that motion?
Yes, I would, thank you.
And trustee Bryden, would you like to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you very much. Is everyone ready for the question? All right, please cast your votes. Thank you very much, and that passes once again unanimously. Thank you very much, Superintendent Reddick. All right, that brings us up to item 4.2.4, POD Investment Strategy, report number 23093, Superintendent Gaudette and Superintendent Nagoy.
Thank you, and good evening. Through the chair to trustees, I'm pleased to present again the proceeds of disposition strategy, which attempts to honor commitments made by past Board of Trustees to deliver on close-the-gap initiatives, as well as secure or make stronger our business case to help secure funding for two of our capital priorities asked to the Ministry of Education. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Again, these were things that we spoke of last week at Committee of the Whole, so that could be partly why there are no questions, as well as your wonderful explanation. So I will read the motion. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve proceeds of disposition allocation to the projects identified in report number 23093, and further authorize staff to tender and award projects either individually or combined to deliver on Board identified system needs in support of the HDSB multi-year plan. Trustee Zhang, would you like to move that motion?
Yes, I will.
Thank you very much. And trustee Gray, would you like to second that?
Yes, I will, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. Thank you very much, and that carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Superintendent Gaudette. Oh, you're not going far, because we're now up to item 4.2.5, Facility Services School Renewal Program, again, for the 2023-2024 Academic Year, report number 23092.
Thank you. And again, through the chair to trustees, I'm pleased to present our capital plan for the following year. Once again, we backed up this approval. This used to come in the fall. We're seeking approval at the same time as budget to help leverage the timing to start to activate some of our projects, get them into design process earlier so that we can hopefully tender sooner and also be out of our schools sooner with our construction activities. So again, pleased to answer any questions related to our capital portfolio.
All right, I look to the speakers list for any questions. Trustee Amos.
Thank you through you, to Superintendent Gaudette. Just wanted to clarify, if the community wanted to know what was happening around school renewal or improvement at their schools, there is a place on the website they can put their own school name into, and it will share a list of what projects are happening at their schools?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair to trustees, that is correct. We update our facilities construction website with school activities with a construction focus, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more speakers, I will read the question. Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board authorize staff to tender and award the 2023, or is it 2023-2024 Facilities Services Project Operation and Maintenance, either individually or combined, as outlined in report number 23092. Can I just check Superintendent Gaudette, because I think the motion reads 2022-2023?
My apologies, you're correct.
It should be 2023-2024. Thank you very much. Vice Chair Rocha, would you like to move that motion?
I will.
Thank you. And trustee Danielli, would you like to second that?
Thank you, yes, I would.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Seeing none, please cast your votes. Kelly? Thank you very much, and that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Superintendent Gaudette, for your three reports. All right, that brings us up to 4.2.7, the LTAP for the 2023-2024 Year, report number 23086, General Manager Thibault.
Thank you through you, Chair Shadworth. We present this quite a bit, so tonight it's going to be more of a shout-out. So I just want to thank Facility Services staff, namely Terry DiMaderos and his team, for helping us with gathering all of the KPI data that now makes the LTAP complete for this year. We want to also thank the Indigenous Rights and Education Department, too, for assisting us through our consultation and developing and enhancing the section 1.2 in the LTAP for Indigenous rights and our responsibility to those. And then also, I just have to thank my planning team, namely Marie Oxtrow, which, you know, brought this vision together and created the document that we have here and all the visual, like that was her doing the heavy lifting, so I want to thank her for that. Lorene and Michelle for developing the numbers and all the background data for these documents. And Mitch also for assisting throughout the process, especially on the feedback survey. So it's presented here tonight for your consideration and approval, and looking forward to continuing the work on how we better engage with our communities. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I look to the speakers list and seeing none, I will read the motion, and I just want to confirm, this is for the 2022 LTAP? Okay, because I'm getting, it's difficult to know where the years go. So be it resolved that the Halton District School Board difficult to know where the years go. So be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the 2022 Long-Term Accommodation Plan, and that staff be directed to submit the updated LTAP for Long-Term Accommodation Plan to the Ministry of Education, and further that all entities identified in community planning partnerships' notifications be advised that the LTAP has been approved, and direct them to the Board's website to review the electronic document. Trustee Oliver, would you like to make that motion?
I make this motion.
Thank you very much. And Trustee Collard, would you like to second that?
Yes, please, I would.
Thank you very much. Are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. Thank you very much, and again, that passes unanimously. All right, that brings us up to item... thank you very much, General Manager Thibault. That brings us up to item 4.2.8, the Operational Plan Targets and Strategies for the 2023-2024 Academic Year, report number 23106. As Associate Director Sal Mani is unable to be here this evening, Director Ennis is going to take it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Chair Shuttleworth, and good evening once again, trustees. The operational plan for '23-'24 is before you. We have aligned our budget process, and we have outlined our commitments in the multi-year plan, in the operational plan, and we present it to you, and are happy to take any questions.
Trustee Zhang.
Thank you, through your chair. So I read this strategy plan for next year. Actually, it's covered all the important items. For this plan, I looked several things I'm very interested, like special education and mental health. Actually, just the last month, during my school visit, I visited at least six classrooms. They have the special education, and this actually, this is my first time to see how these classes are operating. And I find for different configurations, different needs, and the teachers, they have the different skill set. And also, I checked like this special education and our budget plan. I realized we can continue to do, can continue the same, but to be more accurately addressed the needs, community needs, and we needed the data to support what we can allocate the resources. For example, mental health and special needs, special education, they have a different program. And if we can, we know in the future, what is the, what kind of special education we need, we can provide better support for the teachers and arrange the education and a training plan for that. So I also get a lot of phone calls about this special education, and I know results are limited, and we cannot... sometimes it's very hard to arrange those programs. So I have a suggestion, this is just for future consideration, we can have the board for open discussion. So first, we have a lot of ideas, get a lot of feedback from the community. The community, they have the demands, and they have a request for different... for the board, when we gather those information, can we have like, have a policy in place, or we have some procedure here? Because we gather the data from communities through the survey, and our school board has a survey, and also some individual schools, they have a survey. Can we, in the future, have all the survey provide raw data to trustees? So for us, we can better understand what is the real needs, because for the resource allocation, this is the school board, trustees' responsibility. The other one is, I also know like the bullying and the violence in the schools, we need to handle those cases. Can we have the, in the future, in our practice, can we have create a database to track all the events, so incidents? So that's also for trustees can better understand what is the trend, what is the change. So this is for early intervention and prevention. Thank you.
Thank you for the question and the suggestion, Trustee Zhang. Through the chair, certainly, we always seek to create greater clarity through data for any of our commitments, and that's something that we can certainly look at getting greater accuracy around data sets and data points on the items that you have raised. I don't know if Superintendent Reddick has any further comments.
Through the chair to Trustee Zhang, well, thank you for visiting the schools and seeing some of our classes and teachers in action. I would agree that our teachers have a wide range of skill sets, and our program has deeply invested in expanding those skill sets to make sure that they are serving the needs of students in the range of programs that we offer, and we will certainly continue to invest in that, in this operational plan.
Okay, Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through your chair, to the director, thank you for this plan. There's a great many strategies identified for every multi-year plan goal, and there's some great expected outcomes listed. And I just would suggest that we do include and incorporate into this plan a listing of what data sources we currently have in-house that we can use to measure the expected outcomes, or potentially a list of, you know, data sources that we will be working to develop so that we can, in fact, quantify whether we are reaching the expected outcomes, the, you know, stipulated increases or decreases in certain measures. So that would be my suggestion going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Trustee Oliver.
Okay, seeing no further speakers, I will read the motion. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the operational plan for the 2023-2024 Academic Year as outlined in report number 23106. Trustee Oliver, would you like to move that motion?
I move the motion.
And Trustee Gray, would you like to second that motion?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. We don't have it. It's not in the... Just one minute. Is everyone ready for the question? All right, if everybody can please cast their votes, thank you. Thank you very much, and that carries unanimously. All right, that brings us up to item 4.2.9, the Procurement Policy, report number 23110. Superintendent Nagoy and Director Ennis.
All right, and through Chair Shuttleworth, all trustees, this is a new policy around the procurement and guiding principles surrounding fair, equitable, and sustainable procurement within our board. It has been a long collaboration with all of our departments, including equity, inclusion, and indigenous education. There are, some of the definitions are here, as well, you'll find a lot more details in the revised administrative procedure. And I'd be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I know that there was a lot of discussion around this document prior to this coming to the table, so I appreciate all the questions that were asked by the trustee that added clarity to the report. So again, thank you on the trustees, or for the trustees' input in supporting this motion. And Trustee Baxter had a question.
Thank you. Through your chair, Shuttleworth, to Superintendent Nagoy. I think I'm perceiving this to be a bit of a different process in that we had a pre-existing administrative procedure, but we didn't have the policy. And so now the policy has been developed, which we are approving this evening, or are looking at this evening. I just wanted to clarify that some of the newer things that are contained in the policy, such as the new definitions of social procurement, ethical procurement, that kind of thing, will there be information to allow potential vendors to understand what the expectations are around those things coming in the future in the procedure? And I'm looking specifically at things like defining socially responsible business from the HDSB, and what advancing diversity and inclusion looks like to the HDSB when evaluating vendors. So just in the interest of transparency and public money, would that information be coming in greater detail for prospective vendors?
And perhaps for the chair, to Trustee Baxter, perhaps I'll start, and I think online we also have Dave Bennett, the manager of procurement, and he may want to jump in a little bit. So in the procedure, there are, there's a section as well on sustainable procurement that's a bit more all-encompassing. A lot more definitions are included as well. What we don't include in procedures typically is evaluation criteria or expectations. So those are being developed. When we have a requirement for a new service or goods to be procured, we're working with the initiating department or school in order to identify their needs, and through that identify what the evaluation process looks like. So the evaluation process will look slightly different for different things depending what we are procuring. Having said that, we will be applying these principles to every procurement initiative, to the extent that it's applicable, and to the extent that it's in compliance with the broader public sector procurement directives. So the intent was not to include that kind of detail in the procedure. However, on the procurement website, we can include more details, we can start building on it. It is an area that is always evolving, and we feel like we're catching up as an organization. So certainly, that is where we would see that coming or being built. And I'm not sure if Manager Bennett would like to add anything.
Thank you, Superintendent Nagoy. Through your chair to trustees, I would support the comments from Trust... Superintendent Nagoy. We have the opportunity with the implementation of this policy to take some of the great work that's already been done, and to broaden some of the definitions, and then to be able to acquire different resources through the use of this. We, the intent is through the purchasing webpage, and as well with the board webpage, that we will be able to convey information to the public as to revise specifications that we have. But the main thrust where prospective vendors would be informed as to the criteria, and the details and the specifics would be contained within the procurement documentation that are used for each process.
Do you have a follow-up?
Just a thank you. That answers my question, and I do support this new policy and the ideals behind it. Given that we are spending public money, I think these are great initiatives. So thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, again, I want to thank all those involved in clarifying and sort of developing this policy, because I know there was a lot, lot of questions, and it was really great to see that collaborative approach while having the trustees ask questions, and you were able to get answers, and adjust and shift. And I think that's really what we need to see how this board is working. So it's really great. So I will read the motion. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the procurement policy as appended to report number 23110 as Appendix A. Trustee Baxter, would you like to move this motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Trustee Collard, would you like to second that?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much. Are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. And that passes. As Trustee Daniele is not in the room, it passes unanimously, but Trustee Daniele was unable to vote in that vote. Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us up to item 4.2.10, the Governance Motion, Governance Bylaw, report number 23102. Trustee Collard, Trustee Rocha, Trustee Baxter, Trustee Ahmed, and Trustee Oliver. Would any of you like to say anything?
Thank you, yes. This came to Committee of the Whole last week, and we had a fulsome discussion around the table. Some changes were made at the behest of trustees, and the report is now before you, waiting for your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will look to the speaker's list to see if there are any questions. Again, many of the policies that were seen today, we've discussed at previous meetings. So I will now read the motion. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees amend the Board Governance Bylaw with the recommendations listed in report number 23102, and that all prior versions be revoked. And be it further resolved that the Committee in Appointments' Governance Procedure, Appendix A, Committee of the Whole Meeting's agenda be amended to remove Item 7 in alignment with the changes to Appendix A in the Board Governance Bylaw. Trustee Collard, would you like to move that motion?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much. And Vice Chair Rocha, would you like to second that?
Yes, please.
Is everyone ready for the question? All right, please cast your votes. Thank you very much, and that passes unanimously, and Trustee Daniele is back in the room. Okay, we are now up to item 4.2.11, the Framework Policy, report number 23115. Trustee Collard, Rocha, Baxter, Ahmed, and Oliver.
Thank you, yes. We are in the process of doing our cyclical review of the policy and procedure framework policy, and noted from delegation we had earlier this year that there is a reference in the AD Act to the, regarding this responsibility of boards to consult with school councils. But there's, there is a certain amount of vagueness to the way the Education Act is phrasing the section, and so we seek legal clarification to ensure that we are getting the adequate amount of consultation from our school councils and our school communities as prescribed by the AD Act on the correct topics and subject matter. We don't understand exactly which ones require it and which ones don't, and so getting the legal opinion will help us to ensure that we're getting it when we're supposed to.
All right, great. Thank you very much. I see no speakers on the list, so I will read the motion. Be it resolved that Legal Counsel provide the Governance Document Review Standing Committee with a legal opinion regarding the scope of Section 302 Subsection 8 of the Education Act as outlined in report number 23115. Trustee Collard, would you like to move this motion?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much. And Trustee Baxter, would you like to second that?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much. Is everybody ready for the question? Please cast your votes. Thank you very much, and that passes unanimously, and brings us up to item 4.2.12, for which it's a committee report for which I am the chair of, so I will pass the gavel over to Trustee Rocha, to speak quickly to the committee report on protocols, so on invitation protocol. This was a committee that was comprised of myself, Trustee Oliver, Trustee Amos, and Trustee Gray. We did our homework in looking at what the different municipalities did, the different levels of government did. We found that there was not a lot of consistency in the protocols to invite different levels of government to different events. And so from that, we came up with a report to look at how we can support our school system in how they invite guests. And from that, our hope is that we will then share this with the different levels of government to allow them to have a greater understanding of the importance of the role of the trustee in events that fall within the school community, but from outside the school environment. And I will check if any of my co-colleagues on the committee have anything they would like to say.
All right, there are no speakers other than myself, so... So through you?
No, through you.
Through me, through you? I'm not sure at this point. So I know when the motion was originally written back in November, the intent of the motion was to work with, or determine, you know, what events... emotion was to work with or determine, you know, what events. Well, not event, but to work collaboratively with other elected officials to determine how invitations would be disseminated, who gets invited to what, and to ensure that invitations are extended. And when I look at the report that was presented this evening, I don't feel confident that that's what was accomplished. I look at it and I'm a little confused. I think the report is good in a way in that a principal of a school does have guidance as to where a principal can extend invitations to trustees and there's a bit of a speaking protocol, which is great. But then when it, when it gets extended to at a higher level, to elected officials, I'm not seeing it in the document. And I really thought the intent of the original motion was to deliver something to other elective officials so that they'd have a guideline as to here's when you should invite us, this is what you should do. And I'm not seeing that in the document. So I think a lot of good work has been made up until now. And I was hoping I would see more in this report and I was hoping I would see a document that was ready to be shared with other elected officials. So in, in that vein, I was hoping that perhaps the, the ad hoc committee would be open to either taking it back for another, let's say, kick at the can or to show that, or perhaps it would like to take it back to committee of the whole where we could have a more fulsome discussion as a group of trustees and maybe we can have that discussion as to how we can work better when it comes to invitation. So I will put it out there and depending on what I gauge from other people, I, I would want to make a motion to refer it back to a committee. I'm just not sure if it's the notification protocol committee or perhaps committee of the whole.
So I'll take it first, but pass it over to some of my colleagues from the committee to speak as well. So I do know that it's not included in the report, but it's, it's included in the previous committee reports that we had that brought us to this final document, which looks at, again, it's a difficult position we find ourselves in. What part of the piece of the puzzle for this motion was to get an understanding of the importance of trustees at outside events. However, we have no control over what other events do. We can only lead by example and share what we are doing and ask other entities outside, be it city councils, be it MPPs, whatever it is that we're doing, for them to recognize that when we invite you to things, we are hoping that that has a reciprocal relationship and recognizing that within a school environment, the trustees are the ambassadors of the school. So they are seeing the sort of the, the top piece. So that was just, I'll pass it over to my colleagues. I don't know trustee Gray, trustee Amos, or trustee Oliver, if you have anything you'd like to add.
So there's, there's a speakers list, so I'll go to trustee Amos.
Thank you. I wanted to say, Chair Shuttleworth has already mentioned some of this. We cannot impose on our other elected officials to have them have invitation lists per se or so we thought that if we developed our own and then drafted a letter saying this is what we are proposing to do, we would hope that you would do it reciprocally as a trustee, as a valued partner in the, in all the processes and that, and somehow say that, that we need to be respected as fellow political citizens. That was the intent behind it. So it was the communication piece per se with the document that we had created as, that's how we had discussed it at the committee.
All right, trustee Gray.
Yeah, thank you. I echo the comments of Chair Shuttleworth and trustee Amos. I recall in speaking to a mayor, one of the four mayors in our Halton region, that they were flat out, we don't have any kind of protocol existing, but we'd sure like to know what you develop. And so it was a way that I saw us to be able to make inroads to share, as has been expressed here tonight, share, you know, a protocol that we have, but, but also share what we found out in our investigation, which was that only one of the four regions had any protocol at all. And so I think we've done some groundbreaking work. Perhaps though, as vice chair Rocha has said, our work isn't done. And, and I fully accept that, that if we can take it to the next level or continue in our work in expressing to our local political partners, maybe what we have found and maybe share and maybe even begin a dialogue as to, wouldn't it be nice if the next time this happens, that when a trustee is invited, that they also are acknowledged as part of the, of the people that are in attendance? So I, I fully accept your, your comments. I don't take them as criticisms. I take them as taking us and challenging us to take it to the next level and I'm totally on for that. Thank you.
All right, trustee Oliver.
Yeah, thank you through your chair. I echo everything that's been said. I'll add further that, and specifically in response to your comments, vice chair Rocha, is point five in our table there actually, you know, does specify that outside of HCSB, the other elected officials have no protocols. And as trustee Gray said, when I spoke to one of the other mayor's offices, they said there was no protocol, but they would like to be invited to whatever we're hosting. So, you know, to Chair Shuttleworth's point, we need to lead by example. I'm not sure what more we can achieve apart from perhaps, you know, writing a letter to all of our community stakeholders to say that, you know, when you're hosting an event and you're inviting trustees, hey, consider inviting a trustee. And when you do invite a trustee, please do introduce them as you introduce all the other elected officials. I think that's really the only, you know, nail on the head that we can get here. So that's my response.
Trustee Bryden.
Thank you, vice chair. If I were a principal and, and I'm two weeks in this chair, so I haven't even had a decent chance to consult with the principals in my area, the, this would be more useful to me if it said, for X type of event, you should be inviting this type of person, this type of person, this type of person. For X, for Y type of event, invite this person, this person, this person. So I, I think that like the starting is there, but that this could be a stronger framework if it were built into a matrix and, and, and then it becomes a useful tool for principal rather than a list that we can look at and think about, well, should I be inviting that person or not inviting that person? Give, give a little more clarity. It might, might be a little bit stronger. So in that manner, I think perhaps trustee Rocha's recommendation to refer back to committee may be appropriate at this point.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other speakers, what I will add is that, so trustee Amos, when you talked about the letter and trustee Oliver, when you talked about the letter, that's, I think, what I was expecting to see is this is what we're sharing and because it's not in here, that's where I thought, oh, what are we going to share? There's nothing in here. So that's why I thought perhaps it can go back to committee to develop that letter. And to trustee Bryden's point about creating that matrix, I think that's also very helpful. And it's almost like there's two audiences here. It's what could principals do because we do have a very active relationship with principals versus what could information we share, what can we share with the elected officials? And yeah, we're, we're breaking new ground, like we're going to share the information with them. So it's almost where are these documents? And I think that's, that's what I was expecting to see and I didn't. So, so if you are open to going back to committee, I would look to the existing committee members if you wanted to. When I write my motion, would you like me to say defer it to the ad hoc committee or would you like me to say refer it to committee of the whole? And I will, whatever, whatever you'd like. Ad hoc, okay, so.
Pass back?
We're going to play, pass the gavel. So let me figure out what I'm going to say. Okay, so the motion I'll put before you is be it resolved that report 23123 be referred to the, referred back to the notification protocol ad hoc committee and I so move.
And do we have somebody to second? Oh, trustee Collard will second that motion. Is there any debate? Are you ready for the question? All right, if everybody can please pass their vote. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. So the ad hoc committee, we will try to get together again post SWIFT to try and get some stuff done. So thank you very much and thank you for your time. Okay, we're going to try to get through one more thing before nine o'clock and we take a break because there's only one left under action items. So item 4.3.1, which is the transportation policy, report number 23113. Superintendent Nagoy.
And through chair Shuttleworth to all trustees, before you is the revised or updated transportation policy. It really is just containing a new format and headlines, guiding principles. It does not contain any different eligibility criteria from the prior policy. So there is no real changes that impact the process. It is just a different format and some additional guiding principles and I'd be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I know that as this is a transportation policy that impacts our next school year, it is expected to be deferred. However, I think it might be something where we look at suspending the rules for. So if I can see if anybody is willing, vice chair Rocha to suspend the rules and trustee Collard to second that motion. So again, because this is a suspension of the rules, we will need a two thirds vote. So before we, we look at that, is there any discussion around this? So superintendent Nagoy, can you sort of speak to the, sort of not the urgency, but the, the more importance of having this dealt with tonight?
Thank you. And yes, that would be important that we do deal with it before the end of the school year. This does impact not just our board, it is done in coordination with the coterminals board and the student, the Halton Student Transportation Services in order to be able to achieve continued efficiencies in transportation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So the motion to, to waive, suspend the rules is on the floor. Do I see any questions? See none if you're ready for the question and you, hold on. Yes, there we go. If everybody can please cast their votes. Thank you very much. And that passes unanimously. So now if we look at the policy and see if there are any questions or debate regarding the policy before I put the motion on the floor. Siri, do you have a question? All right, seeing none, I will put the motion on the, oh, oh, sorry, trustee Oliver.
Sorry, through your chair. I'm just trying to collect my thoughts here. I'm looking at requirements, number three, rural areas, more than 1.6 K or, and the or less based on safety considerations was removed. Yet under requirements point one, it does talk about hazardous walking conditions. Can you please speak to that?
Thank you for the question through the chair to trustee Oliver. That is correct. The reason we removed that because it doesn't apply just to rural areas. Rural area, for example, would have buses that are, because they are on regional roads, the bus would come to the end of the driveway on the side of the home of the student. But other hazardous or safety consideration are in play for other areas such as a new subdivision that does not have a walking infrastructure around and controlled intersections, for example. So there, there are hazardous conditions that are considered for all students depending on the conditions. In particular with rural students because of being on highways, on regional highways, they would be transported even below 1.6 kilometers because, you know, the high speed and the fact that there's no controlled intersections within a certain walking distance. So they would be actually picked up on the side of the road at the top of the driveway.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Yes, thank you very much. Earlier tonight, I had a chance to, to talk to superintendent Nagoy and that was about the concept under the guiding principles of the policy, that there might be some consideration or some mention that in the practice of the HCSB and the HSTS, that there is very fulsome and well in advanced communication of changes. And I think that we've both agreed and I think Roxanna is going to take that back to look at where that might fit in somewhere so that we've got, you know, very in advanced communication happening as much as we're able to. And in specific, as an example, we've talked about, for example, those individuals who are riding in, in transits that are provided as an exemption to the distance from school, that they are informed every year of this. And I think that that would be a very good practice for us to have and would probably eliminate some of the concerns that people would have once they learned that they no longer would have transportation. So these are just some things that I've been discussing with Roxanna. She's aware of some of the suggestions that I would have so that we could just strengthen that communication element within the HSTS and then the HCSB. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, seeing no more speakers on the speakers list, I will read the motion. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the transportation policy as appended to report 23113 as appendix A. Trustee Gray, would you like to move that motion?
Yes, I would.
Thank you very much. And trustee Ahmed, would you like to second that motion?
I second it.
Thank you very much. Is there any debate? See none if you can cast your votes, please. Thank you very much. And that carried unanimously. So that brings us to the end of section four. So we are going to take a very.
Let's do the student.
Oh, we are going to take a quick five minute break, but before we break, we forgot something. So during the student trustee presentation and all of our thank yous, we got in such a flurry, we forgot to give you a teeny token of appreciation. So again, on behalf of the whole Board of Halton District School Board, we appreciate all the work you've done in engaging the students and thank you so much for all your work. We are going to have a very quick five minute bio break. So if everybody can be back speedily by nine, 10, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much, everyone. So five minutes break, please. speedily by nine-ten, I would appreciate it, thank you very much, everyone, so five minutes break, please. From the board, and look at speedy Superintendent Padraig Barak, he's already ready to go. We start off with Superintendent Padraig Barak and the before and after-school program update, report number 23122.
Thank you, through the chair, um, to trustees. Um, it's my pleasure to update you on our before and after-school programs, kind of current state, and, um, a proposed shift in our delivery model for next year, as detailed in the report. As you know, the, um, Education Act requires all boards, sorry, I'm still kind of finishing my piece of chocolate, which superintendent Fowler gave to me two seconds before. Uh, the Ed Act requires all boards to offer before and after-school programs where sites are viable. Historically in Halton, all of our elementary school sites are viable, except for our three middle schools. And historically, this obligation's always been met through partnerships with our third-party operators. There, uh, as noted, uh, in the report, there's an unprecedented workforce shortage, which has really, um, made us sit down and talk and meet with providers and talk about, um, the future stability of these programs that are so vital for our parents and important for so many of our families, so we have, um, jointly determined to, um, take a more collaborative regional approach here, and we will be directly assuming the operation of these before and after programs next year in five school sites listed in the report, all five are in Burlington, and these are being released, um, from Hamilton, Burlington, Branford, YMCA, and we'll be, uh, assuming, using our ECEs to deliver the programs. We think this will offer, um, stability, it also puts us in a proactive, um, strategic, um, rather than reactive approach. If a program does fail, uh, or collapse, uh, the board does have an obligation to assume it within seven days in the regulations, so, um, we're trying to be in front of this and offer some stability, we had, um, we did have, um, a few issues this year and a few breaks and breaches in programs, some delayed starts, so there were cracks in the foundation, so to speak here, in the delivery, and I, I wanna uphold our partnerships with our providers, they do an incredible job, um, delivering these programs on our behalf and have for a long, long time, but we do think we may need to look at, um, different strategic shifts, so this is a small move in that direction, and we think will stabilize, um, these programs in our schools, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, oop, we do have some speakers on the speaker's list. Trustee Brydon.
Um, thank you, chair, um, being directly a parent who was affected by, um, the suspension of, uh, of before and after-school care that far exceeded seven days during this course of this school year, um, this is close to my heart, um, and, um, the question I want to ask is, uh, knowing, knowing that you won't get to see the, sorry, pardon me, through, through the chair, um, knowing, knowing that you won't get to see the, the long-term realization of this, um, what direction, uh, would you like to see trustees moving, uh, the board moving, uh, with the support of our, our trustees, to, uh, to get more of that stability, um, and, and, um, how we might uh, ensure that we are able to provide those programs, given, given the labor supply challenges that, uh, are being faced by our providers and, and being faced more broadly?
That, that's a great question, um, I'm not sure I have a, a great answer for it, I know some boards have, um, certainly added their voice to, uh, to the ministry, Ministry of Education, childcare falls to the Ministry of Education as well, and, um, it has for many years now, um, and just in terms of advocating for a broader workforce strategy, um, there's always been a wage gap in the early, uh, ECE, uh, and, um, I know some boards have, have pushed for, um, for that, and, um, it's, it's long-needed in the sector, and, um, and whether it's, uh, school boards delivering programs or, or third-party operators, they're all good quality, um, licensed programs, it's, it's just a matter of incentivizing the workforce to do it. Tons of ECEs are graduating and never practice as an ECE for one day. They get absorbed into other fields, and if we could keep the people that are graduating, um, that would go a long way, but it's hard to raise a family on 25 bucks an hour in Halton, it's just a simple fact.
May I follow up?
Um, in there, there are structural questions that are, are province-wide about those labor shortages, within what is in our control, uh, what is the, um, in these five schools, we shifted to being direct provider, um, is there, is that something we should be looking at more broadly, um, as we move forward?
Um, we always want to do this in cooperation with our operators who have been with us for, for a long time. Are we in a position to assume more school sites, if, if needed, yes, we will be, we're gonna build an architecture that could be expanded upon if, if needed, um, and in strategic, in strategic ways. Um, our advantage bluntly as a school board is we do, we can offer a full workday, a seven-and-a-half, it's the split shift which is very challenging, you know, I, essentially hiring someone to work a few hours in the morning, they go home, they come back and work a few more hours at the end of the day, it's a very high, in a field where there is so much full-time work, that's a challenge, we, we, we don't have to follow that model, and that is our, that's our advantage. And providers where there's a co-located childcare within the school site, and we have a dozen of those schools, those providers there have more flexibility as well, um, but it's, if it's a standalone site, um, that split shift is very difficult to fill in this climate right now. So that, that's our advantage, we can build a model that offers people seven-and-a-half-hour consecutive day with, you know, pension and benefits, which is, is good in this sector.
Thank you very much, trustee Gray.
Yes, thank you very much, through the chair, just wonder if superintendent Padraig Barak, uh, has any data on the number of schools who currently have before and after-school programs, uh, completely filled, I'm hearing of that happening more and more often, and, uh, um, there's challenges, and, and, and in cases where that exists, is there an opportunity for that before and school af- after-school program to expand? Um, what, what prevents them from expanding, is it the, is it the labor force, or is it the, uh, offer of size and space within, uh, a school?
Very few of our programs are operating at their licensed capacity right now, um, yet not taking families. Um, it is strictly because of hiring, they can't hire people to expand the programs, so there are lots of families not being able to, I'll be clear on that, there's lots of families not able to access, uh, these programs, we hear this a lot, um, in boundary reviews, it's one of the big worries, you're asking me to shift, uh, communities, I'm worried I won't get a spot in this new one, and we do hear that quite a bit, and we're sensitive to it, um. It, it is, um, trustee Gray, it is just that, it's their inability to hire staff, uh, they're, they would love to expand and, and meet demand, it's, it's just been very difficult.
Thank you, and seeing no further speakers on the speakers list, um, I think it's really nice to hear, this is a really good news story, because as you said, superintendent Padraig Barak, that idea of having a full day of work allows people to commit to that, that piece in their life, so I think it's great, and I think it will help and support the families who are struggling, because we don't have enough childcare workers, because this hopefully will help to fill that gap, so thank you so much for your report. Okay, that brings us up to item 5.1.2, the sustainability report, which is number 23125, superintendent Gaddet.
Thank you and good evening again, um, this report's for information, and I'll say I'm really proud to bring this report, um, really proud to join an organization that recognizes the importance of the environment, um, uh, when I came here, I learned more about the intersectionality of our multi-year plan and its pillars, or our commitments, um, and I, I think through even the report that you saw tonight, through the operational goals, um, I think there's a lot going on in our schools that isn't represented, uh, through some of our central office efforts and strategies, even though we do try to support it, so, um, I'm really proud to, uh, present the great work that started back probably before 2000, um, but ended with the, or began with the environmental management team. Uh, since I've joined the board, we've done some great work with policy development to align with the United Nations, uh, Sustainable Development Goals. This, uh, is what our students are learning in our system, uh, I know the board asked me, how are we going to learn, and so part of this is the education for ourselves as well, uh, to find some of the connections, uh, between the great work that goes on in our schools, as well as our central office, uh, to celebrate that work and to connect it to the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. Um, so my hope is that this report really resonates with staff in our system, as well as the students, and that they can start to pull apart, um, some of the key performance indicators that were, I'll say it's draft, much like the LTAP, uh, we went through a process with KPIs in our LTAP, these KPIs are draft as well, we're still collecting the data, trying to verify the data, and also, um, identify the KPIs that are going to resonate, uh, through our system. Um, but my hope is that we can demonstrate where successes have been achieved at schools, and with that, we can leverage the knowledge from these other schools, uh, through community building and learning, uh, much like, uh, Irma Colson, uh, with, with the Climate Ready School, it wasn't just that site that received the benefit, it was the professional development that went along with that package, that educated staff, uh, at that school and beyond, so that's my hope, is that this starts to leverage, uh, the great work that's going on, identify what's going on, because, uh, I think it's pretty difficult, uh, even with an expert such as Suzanne Burwell that was with our system, her knowledge base was, uh, you know, just far beyond mine, um, but I think she was still surprised at what went on at some of our schools in terms of the efforts and initiatives, and so, uh, with that, I'm, you know, pleased to take any questions, I will say, uh, one of the questions that has been brought forward is around outdoor classroom usage, and, uh, certainly that's a KPI, I'd love to drill down and, uh, get that information, I do understand there is one school that is using a calendar to schedule their outdoor classroom, uh, but I'm also aware of other schools where they're encouraging all teachers to get outside, uh, to conduct learning, so it, it goes much beyond just the outdoor classroom, but certainly, these are the KPIs I hope to learn, uh, from trustees, staff and students, what resonates, so that we can start to build an inventory, uh, to, to share in the learning. I'm happy to take any questions.
Wonderful, thank you very much, we do have a speakers list of four, I am going to remind you before I start calling the names, to be crisp, please, so trustee Collard.
Should I be crisp or should I be robust? Okay, I just want to thank you very much for this report, it is an absolute delight for me to read the history of all of the initiatives that we've done as a board, um, one of my goals One of my goals when I was first elected in 2010 was to eliminate single-use bottled water from our school board. And I railed against the Nestle's of the world. I, I pleaded with trustees to please support me in this initiative. And in 2017, we finally got the AP for commercially bottled water. And I felt not a sense of satisfaction, but a sense of this board gets it. Because we were probably one of the very first boards to do so. And I, I see that the measures that we take on an annual basis and the commitment in our multi-year plan. I am so proud to be a part of this board and the work that we do here. People don't always think of environmental sustainability as being an equity issue, but it is one of the biggest equity issues because of what's happening in the world right now. We have millions of displaced people due to climate change. And these people are not getting equitable access to clean drinking water, food, et cetera. But now I have to be crisp, and I will say just thank you for the report, and I appreciate all of this work. Thank you.
Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. Through the chair, I just want to say that in the last couple of weeks, I've had the honor to travel with a regional counselor and a member of provincial parliament to a school in Acton called Robert Little. And at that school is a model of a sustainable town. And truly, the learnings that these students are receiving lets everyone know that the work that our board is doing is simply permeating and making its way through to the classrooms. And recently, the results of the work of this grade three and four class was tweeted out by Jason Meisner as this class won a global award for their work into creating this sustainable town called Future Acton. And I want to say that today I had the privilege of sharing some of the information from this report with some members of the town of Holton Hills, and they are duly, duly impressed. So I just want to again echo the congratulations for the efforts of you, your department members, and all of the others like the Suzanne Burwells in our board who have had such impact in making this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Wang.
I kind of just wanted to highlight and say thank you for centering student voice in all of this. I know that on LC, we have two student reps who sit on there, Kalina and Budav. And they've always come back to Ethan and I, giving updates on what they heard about and kind of how the board is working to include them in sustainability efforts and all of these great things. And then at our June meeting, they gave like a big summary of all the things that they heard this year. And it was super cool hearing about kind of climate-ready schools and eco schools and everything that they said. And they clearly sounded super excited about everything that they were sharing with us, which truly shows to me that they felt included and they felt heard and that they were just as excited as the board was in doing all of this. So thank you so much for all of these efforts, but then also for centering student voice in all of it.
Thank you very much. Trustee Amos.
Thank you, through you. I just wanted to say, having been here since 2000, there's been huge changes. And, and some of that is just less photocopying, the bottled water elimination, and the fact that students are now so aware of the environment and the protocols that they have made schools do. It's the students who've driven us. And student voice is so important, and thank you, as trustee Wang said, that for incorporating that. But I actually think we need to listen to the students more, and we need to listen to their voices because they can lead us. Because they're the ones who are going to be looking after our planet long after we are. And so we have come so far, and we really have, but we need to go a lot further. And, and part of that, you can see that the effect of climate change is happening on all the weather patterns and the fires and all that. And it's scary, and if we don't do something, as we all know, it, it's going to be detrimental to human life. So thank you for this, and thank you for highlighting how far we've come. And I'm just going to, and thank for everyone that's been involved and encourage you to listen more to the students. And, and you said the fact that schools are doing such much more than we do, we need to capture that. We need to capture what's happening at the schools and, and model it here. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Wiger.
Through the chair, to Superintendent Godet. So I just wanted to briefly ask, I really love that we have these KPIs for, for staff, and I wanted to know, how do we kind of connect these goals to students? And is there a particular reason on why certain KPI, KPIs like outdoor classrooms are true across the system where others in the social division aren't satisfied? So that's just my question.
Thank you very much for the questions. Through the chair to trustees. I'll say the items that are filled in have been somewhat verified. The others are, it's data that we need to collect. I could not rely on the data that I, I had available to myself. So certainly, you know, this portfolio is shared with Superintendent Flahout. He and Suzanne had sent out a great survey to our system. So we, we got some just awesome intel from the system. But again, it was about only 25% response rate. So we're hoping to engage further with, with our school communities and figure out how we can populate these. And as I said, part of this is draft. We want to make sure that we're connecting with, with students and with staff in terms of what resonates with them, what information they want to see. So I'm happy to continue the dialogue. I, I have met with students that have, you know, figured out who to connect with. I'm meeting with staff, you know, early next week to continue this work. I, I'm actually really excited because now this is public. I think the Environmental Leadership and Sustainability Committee saw a draft of this, but it hasn't been shared widely. So this is, my hope is that more people will see this and engage with it and help us identify what the KPIs are that we want to monitor and measure, and then also help us complete the inventory so that we, we can identify who's doing what and share in the learning.
Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through your chair to Superintendent Godet. I'm wondering if you can, if you're prepared to speak a little bit about what an active transport plan would be under the social domain for the schools.
Thank you. Great question. And through the chair to trustees, I'll say what's resonating in my mind right now is we just met with the town of Oakville, their CAO, their Commissioner of Transportation, along with other commissioners. And one of the things that the town of Oakville is wrapping up is their traffic management plan. And with that, they're trying to identify how they can encourage more active transportation as well, as well as provide the infrastructure. And so we talked about the toolkit that they're looking to develop, that they can share. And we talked about our individual school needs and how every school is slightly different in terms of how they operate and are configured. And we've learned from past experience when we have frustrated our communities by closing down our parking lots, you know, what that challenge was. And then we've, I'll say systematically, came at it in terms of doing traffic analysis, trying to assess what the culture was at the school and how we could impact that culture. And so part of that was intensive efforts at the start of the school year to, to communicate how students can get to school safely and actively, that they don't need to be dropped off, you know, recommunication plans after the winter break or the March break when habits might get poor again. So like I say, we're, we're starting to approach it more strategically. And with that, I hope that we'll have a bit of a toolkit that we co-develop with our municipal partners as to strategies that they can employ, so that they aren't just inventing all of this from scratch, that we, we're providing some resources. And then again, they can learn from other schools as to what was successful for them and how, how to leverage that. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Amos.
Thank you, through you. I want to plant a seed. So I know at one time, schools were energized by trying to get the eco-school certification. And now it's sort of become a, eh, it happens if it happens. And I think we as a board need to try and energize the schools to think outside the box and, and be more creative. And whether we establish our own type of certification project for all those schools or something, I think we need to re-energize them. And it's just a seed to try and think. But another thing I wanted to say is, a lot of these schools have best practices that other schools don't know about. We need a central hub of best practices. And it's not just for this, but this is an idea. And I've been saying this for years about teaching and other things, but if we could have that too, then they could share their practices, I think it would be a great idea.
If I could respond through the chair to trustees, you know, Superintendent Flahout and I have spoken about the eco-school certification. That isn't the only program out there. There's lots of other partners that we can work with. Certainly, they're well-recognized. They've revamped their program as well, so it is a lot less onerous. So it's still a great program, but it's not the only one. And, and so it's not necessarily showing a fault. If a school isn't eco-certified, they can do other activities. And part of this KPI metric is to offer that menu to them and, and help see where, you know, this environmental problem is so big, where, where can I fit in? And where do I find a connection to the work that needs to be done? So that's part of my hope with that. And I'm trying to think of what the second comment you had was. Oh, the best practices. So yes, thank you. Because you reminded me, I haven't done it here yet with our students, but certainly at my former board, after a few years of work, we got into student senate meetings where we talked about how each secondary school handled source separation differently. And in some cases, some schools, it was an initiation process. So when you showed up as a grade nine, that was your job, was to source separate, and, and that was your initiation into the school led by the seniors. Other, other schools took other factors into account, your course offering. So if you took this course, you were part of the eco club and you were responsible. So to your point, the central repository of the tools and the tricks that work, given your unique community, need to be addressed. And, and so I'd love to get there with, with our students.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Godet. And you can see the passion behind your report, not only from you, but from the engagement with the trustees. So thank you so much for your report. We really appreciate hearing about it and look forward to hearing more about those KPIs. Okay, we are now up to item 5.1.3, the Human Rights and Equity Advisor Committee Update, report number 23119. We have System Principal Walker and Superintendent Petco to speak to us.
Through you, Chair Shuttleworth. As you know, we don't do this work alone. And two incredible individuals who work alongside me hand in hand, serving students, families and communities at Holton District School Board are here this evening. So I want to acknowledge, you heard from Gabriella Etcheveria earlier this, this evening, System Principal of Indigenous Rights and Education. And right next to me is Shalita Walker, our System Principal of Equity, Human Rights and Inclusive Education. Two individuals who, who are completely dedicated, committed and passionate about this work, who work alongside me. And without them, this work would not be moving along as it is. So I want to hear, say thank you. A tremendous thank you to both you, Ms. Walker and Ms. Etcheveria, for all the work that you put in to support students and families. Having said that, the report this evening is about the Human Rights and Equity Advisory Committee, fondly known as HREAC. I don't know why it's not H R E A C, but HREAC just sounds better. So this evening, I would like to turn it over to System Principal Walker. And the reason being is throughout this year, she has been pivotal in supporting the direction and guidance of this committee, committee, committee work. So I, I've asked her here to actually give us the update. So over to you, System Principal Walker.
Thank you. Good evening, and through the chair, I believe. Thank you, thank you for those kind words. I really appreciate that, and I think it is possible because of the leadership that we have. I know we do a lot of kudos here in education, but I like to really truthfully give them out when they're true. So I just wanted to say thank you to that. So good evening, everybody. I first of all want to thank you for this opportunity to share with you the HREACs, as I say it, board update for this year. But before I do, I'd like to send regrets on behalf of Chair Kimberly Cato. Kimberly Cato has been the chair for the past two years. We are in our second year of completing the committee's work with our board. And for those of you who are not familiar, the committee serves as an extension to the work that we do at the system level. The committee is comprised of both school and board-based leadership, trustee governance, as well as parents and community representations, or community organizations that support specifically our students within the Holton region. And they work in an advisory capacity to support the, and inform the work that, around the table in terms of our operational plans and our multi-year plans. And so this year in particular, we had the opportunity to really delve into the student, to build on the student census data that we examined last year. And in particularly, we, in particular, we looked at the HDSP Student Voices Report, which captured the experiences of students in our board, of their experiences of racism and discrimination, in particular anti-black racism. And from those five themes that came out, we had some renewed commitments by the board, as well as some new commitments. One of the new commitments that the committee explored, and this is work that has just begun and so will be a key work next year as we continue, is the System Racism Response Team. This was one of the recommendations that came out of the report based on student voice. And so the request was for the board to explore the possibilities of having a system racism response team. And so I'd just like to read a quote from the Student Voices Report that solidifies that commitment. It says, "Based on student feedback, there is a need for an appropriate range of responses for racism infractions. The response team would oversee the implementation and accountability of appropriate actions and would monitor and respond to reports of racism and discrimination submitted through a confidential system, which would be developed. Further exploration of this initiative may involve staffing and funding implications." And that's on page 37 of the report. So that is something that initial conversations and discussion began, but certainly requires a more robust conversation in the new year. The other focus really was around membership. So we found this year, we had five membership vacancies arise, two HDSP staff and three for membership, including parent and community. And so at this point, it gave us an opportunity to revisit and re-explore our terms of reference with the help of the trustees that gave valuable guidance and support and knowledge in that area, as well as an opportunity for those on the committee to examine and come to a process for selecting new memberships. So when the committee first formed, of course, that selection took place by HDSP staff. However, because this is a committee that we're really trying to center the voices of the communities that we serve, it was important that community representation was at the helm of selecting. So we are currently in that process. We have had 56 applicants to, to sit on those three community and parent vacancies. And so we continue at this time to vet the applications that have come through, and we'll have a decision to present to the trustees at September's board meeting. And we also, I think, I think those would be the two things that I would say we've done at this time, and I will pass back to the chair.
Thank you very much, System Principal Walker. I wanted to also add at this stage that we've had the incredible support of trustee Amos and trustee Daniele on this committee as trustee reps. And I would like to, if, if you throw it over to you, if either of you would like to make any comments at this time.
It has been a real honor and a learning process being part of this committee. And the community members who are part of it are very passionate and want to help our board make a difference. And it's very evident in their conversations and their guiding principles. principles, when they're sharing their perspectives, it's about trying to make a difference for those students in the classroom. And it's very evident that they are there because they want to make sure that our school does the best they can for the students. And it's been very interesting dialogue. I have learned a lot myself. And I would like to thank them all for all the hard work they put into it. And I would say the majority of the work has been about the Student Voice Report, and they have brought some great insight into that. So thank you.
Thank you. I know that work begins at the time, so I'll just say that Trustee Amos expressed it very well. I've only been a few months on this committee. I'm very, very much appreciating the generosity of the members of the committee with sharing their knowledge and experience. It's so far been a fantastic learning experience, and I look forward to next year very much. And I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Trustee Daniele and Trustee Amos, for your input. We appreciate you and your engagement in the committee. And you'd like, you have one more additional comment? Thank you.
Through the chair. Just one thing I wanted to share. We did have new membership join us. And so this year, our newly-appointed System Principal of Indigenous Rights and Education, Gabriella Etcheveria, joined the committee. And so although last year, and we know that one of our commitments with the board is indigenous realities, the being able to have Gabby's voice at the table really allowed us to ensure that we were in centering an indigenous rights and human rights approach. And so I just wanted to ensure that that was also mentioned this evening. Thank you very much.
And that completes our report.
Thank you very much. I looked at the speakers list, and I see nothing. So thank you so much. And again, thank you for all the work you've done. I look forward to hearing about your looking for new members for the upcoming year. And thank you very much for your presentation. All right, that brings us to, well, we have no notices of motion tonight, so that brings us to the Director's Report. I'll pass it over to Director Ennis. He has six items... Oh, no. Six, seven. I just had a new one added, so off you go.
Well, thank you very much, Chair Shuttleworth. I am not going to be going through all the items tonight. In the interest of time, I'm going to ask that trustees watch the videos and certainly read the items that are listed there. But Superintendent Radek, I want to throw it over to you, because there's one video that I'd like you to see. It's only two minutes.
Wonderful. Thank you. Through the chair to trustees. And I'm going to ask Superintendent Padrae Barrick to operate the lights in a moment, if you don't mind. But we had our 36th Annual Special Athletes Track Meet on Friday. It was an outstanding day, and it's been beautifully captured in a very short video. So Summer, if you don't mind, we'll watch this video.
Are you ready, everybody? Yes, are you excited? All right, let's get it going. Have a good day.
So here we are at Garth Webb Secondary School to celebrate our special athletes at the Special Athletes Track Meet. And we're here to give all of our special athletes a chance to participate and enjoy themselves at this beautiful event.
For all the athletes here today, I say, I will celebrate thoroughly. I will celebrate this in such a very way. I will explore the positivity and effort.
In Special Olympics, I get to do sports and have fun all year round.
This gives our students a chance to participate in a variety of different activities, using all sorts of different adaptive equipment, allows them a chance to participate. And we've got running events and jumping events and obstacle courses, basketball, T-ball. We have a chance to celebrate our athletes and our students. We have a variety of volunteers and supporters here as well. Our students have an opportunity to really learn about what they're capable of and what they can do, cheer each other on, and really have a sense of achievement. And this entire event is very inclusive. It allows everyone of all different kinds of abilities to participate together and support each other as they develop this skill.
I thought you'd love to see that. And thank you to Superintendent Radek and her entire team for a great day. Parents and families and students were just excited. And you saw Chair Shuttleworth, she was right there, just having a blast.
And I have to say, both Curtis and I spoke, but we were put to shame by who I will call the keynote speaker, a student from one of the schools who was so inspiring, and it was just so wonderful to see the energy he brought to that event. So it was amazing.
Thank you. And the last item that I want to highlight for you is the Project Search Graduation that Chair Shuttleworth, Trustee Baxter, Superintendent Radek, and I attended, I miss anyone, that it was just an outstanding, outstanding event that is at the hospital. We had, we were in the John Oliver Auditorium, and we just seen the students, the work that has been done, the skills that they're gaining. Some of them gained employment. I mean, it was just outstanding to witness. And so we have some great things happening in our board for students with special education needs. And I just wanted to highlight those two pieces. I want to say that, you know, say my thanks to Ethan and to Cindy, Trustee Wang, and Regina for all of your work and your outstanding contributions to our board this year. Thank you so much. I wish you all the very best on the journey ahead. And we also want to say farewell to someone who's been with us for nine years as Superintendent of Education, who really has been a stalwart in our board, has supported us, has stood with us, has led with integrity, with compassion, with humor, with grace, with class. And we want to acknowledge and thank Superintendent Scott Padrae Barrick for his contributions to the Halton District School Board over these last nine years. And we want to wish him all the very best, and Andrea, all the best on the next leg of your journey. Thank you so much, Scott. Congratulations.
Oh, hold it just there.
On behalf of the trustees, I'm going to pass it over to Jean, because Jean and Scott, I think, have been working with each other for at least eight years.
Yeah, nine years.
Nine years. So I think you probably both joined the board around the same time and have been working the whole time together. So without further ado, Jean Gray.
Thank you. And this is a tribute to Scott. Scott, on the occasion of your 2,529th day of being employed by the Halton District School Board, and in light of your attendance at your 189th board meeting, we want to take a minute to acknowledge your contributions to the board. Scott, over the years, you have provided exemplary leadership in areas such as the startup of full-day kindergarten, and then continuing your work with the early years, working with communications, representing the board, liaising with HEPA, leading challenging program accommodation reviews, and taking responsibility for the information center and before and after-school programs. Through these portfolios, you were able to move the dial, bring many improvements, and provide direction to the board. And for that, we are truly grateful. Through the years and around the table, trustees here have been supported by the information sessions and training that you have provided. To a person, we have had the pleasure of learning from you and have enjoyed your commitment and dedication to the Board of Trustees. Your sense of humor and your easygoing and approachable manner has been the hallmark of the positive relationship you have developed with our Board of Trustees. Scott, when traveling through the hills, as I do, and visiting schools, I heard consistent messages from the many principals and vice principals that you have worked with over the years, comments such as this. Scott provides an amazing level of service, and he's always quick to provide follow-up. Scott is a champion for the schools, no matter the size and no matter the issue. He researches, reaches out, and collaborates with those individuals who can help to make a difference for the schools and the students he serves. He is a true problem solver, always going above and beyond in his support as school admin. Another comment, Scott provides genuine guidance, is always available to provide this guidance and visits often, despite the distance he has to travel each day to get to Halton. Scott has been an amazing superintendent to work with. He is kind, attentive, and supportive, and goes above and beyond for our schools. He's truly inspiring and has been instrumental to the success of our staff and students in the school. Scott, I could go on and on with the accolades that I've heard from the principals and the vice principals and the members of the Board of Trustees. I hope that you understand the impact that you have had through the contributions you have made through your career in the Halton District School Board. Scott, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, we offer you our sincere wishes as you begin the journey into the wonderful world of retirement. And please know that tonight is not goodbye, but simply so long for now. And I have a presentation to make on behalf of the trustees. The trustees have collaborated, come together to provide this gift, and want you to know that also, in addition to this gift, a donation will be made to the Halton Learning Foundation in honor of you.
This paddle was made by the students at White Oaks.
Scott, Superintendent Padrae Barrick, would you like to offer her some, a response?
Thank you. You know, to trustees, you know, past and present, I'm sure they're all watching. And colleagues, present and past, you know, it's been my privilege to work here in the board. I came here nine years ago. And I've only felt really enabled and empowered and supported to do, I think, some really good work. And yeah, it's been an absolute honor. And, you know, I'll miss it. And I'll miss the people. I won't miss the 401, but I will miss everything else. And, you know, I retire with an immense spirit of optimism for this board and public education. I think we're at an interesting time, but there's so much possibility and optimism out there. And I think I've just, it's been my absolute pride to say I worked for this board. And you're all a big part of that. You are a huge part of that. And, you know, to the schools and principals I've had the good fortune of working with, they're really are my heroes there. And they do such amazing work. And I think everything we do here, I hope supports them in their work. And I think they feel very supported. So yeah, I leave here head held high, smiling, and just very thankful. So I thank you all.
Thank you so much, Scott. We will miss you. I just wanted to say a big thank you to the Board of Trustees for everything this year. This is our final meeting of the year. I want to say that tonight's meeting represented perhaps a microcosm of our year. We laughed, we cried, we celebrated excellence. We talked about those who we need to serve better. We talk about a better plan as we move forward. We spoke about student voice. We spoke about how do we get better. And I think that sort of encapsulates what we have been through. We have been through some challenging times. There's no doubt about that. But I believe that we are going to emerge stronger as a board. We're going to emerge more unified. We're going to emerge better. And I want to thank you for us walking together through difficult times and through wonderful times. And I know that as we enter into the 23-24 school year, this team is going to emerge and continue to be held as an example, a shining example of the excellence that exists in the province of Ontario. And that is because of the togetherness that we will have, and we will walk hand in hand towards that excellence. So thank you for everything that you have done this year in supporting staff, students, and families. And I wish you all the very best and a wonderful summer. concludes my report.
Thank you, Director Ennis. And again, thank you, Superintendent Padrae Barrick. We will miss you. But as Trustee Gray said, it's not goodbye. I'm sure we will see you around. See ya. So we have to make an extension. First, I'll quickly go through, there is a list of letters there in the communication from the chair that you have all been comprised of, as well as committee reports. Is there an office update for today for public session? No? That brings us to trustee questions and comments. Are there any? I do know there are some questions from the public, so we will need to extend. So trustee Rocha, do you think 15 minutes will do it?
Yes. If that's the only outstanding item, then yeah, I'll make a motion to extend 15 minutes.
15 minutes. Can I have a second or two to extend 15 minutes for public questions and comments? Trustee Collard, thank you very much. Committee reports are listed here, and they are for perusal. So I don't know that we need to, they're listed, so I think that they can look at them other one time. Is there any objection to extending for 15 minutes? See, none. We will extend for 15 minutes. That will take us to 10:17-ish. Okay. Vice Chair Rocha, are there any questions from the public this evening?
Yes, through you, Chair. There are a few questions from the public this evening. So two questions are very similar in nature, and it has to do with, given that the professionalism policy did not get approved this evening, and instead the board is looking at strengthening language in existing related policies, the public is interested in knowing how that will be achieved.
Thank you very much for the question, Vice Chair Rocha. I'm going to ask Superintendent Taha to respond.
Thank you, Director Ennis. Through you, Vice Chair Rocha, sorry, through you, Chair Shuttleworth, to trustees and to Vice Chair Rocha. Obviously, the board does have a policy, a policy and procedures framework. And the document is our, you know, guiding document, a roadmap as to how policies and procedures are reviewed. Typically speaking, these policies and procedures are on a set schedule. So that will obviously be guiding our review process, and it guides our review processes for all policies and procedures. Now, in the context of the professionalism policy and the consultation process that we had undertaken, and we're grateful for that, you know, throughout that work, we are very familiar with the policies and procedures that exist that directly intersect with the professionalism policy guiding principles and some of the provisions that that policy had specified. So much of the work in relation to how we can take the feedback, the work, and the insight and the perspectives that have been gained from the consultation process and the discussions throughout the last three months have been done, I would say. We know that there are two or three policies and companion administrative procedures that directly speak to professionalism, civility, and so on. And so we know what work needs to be done as far as the existing policies being amended to reflect some of these values and themes that emerged. And as discussed at committee, the whole, we see this work being brought to you early in the fall, as early as September.
All right. Thank you. There is one other question. And this is in reference to the operational plan. And it talks about the operational plan referencing a book called Me and White Supremacy that's being used for staff training purposes. Is this book approved by the Ministry of by the Ministry of Education? And if so, where would parents find a list of books used for such endeavors?
Thank you for the question, Vice Chair Rocha. So the book, Me and White Supremacy, really is not approved by, the Ministry of Education does not approve books that the Halton District School Board nor any other school board uses for, you know, staff training and development. Certainly, that book is considered a seminal work by many in the anti-racist field, an anti-oppression work. And so it is, you know, used as a guide to have a conversation around building one's critical consciousness. And so it is, it is something that, you know, where would parents find a list? There is no such list. You know, the books that we use are books that are considered works that have been given rave reviews, and in some cases seminal works, that is used to guide the conversation around anti-racist, anti-oppression framework and culturally relevant, you know, pedagogies. So that's what we use, and that's how we go about it. And so that would be the response to that question.
All right. Thank you. There is one last question. The person's initials are LP. It is an operational question, and I have been advised that you will receive an email from one of our staff members with a response to your question. And that is all for this evening. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So as this is our final meeting of the 2022-2023 academic year, I'd like to take a moment to thank everyone. First of all, the trustees. Thank you so much for all your work. We've been going at it for a long time. It's been a year of ups and downs, peaks and troughs. And I want to thank you all for your integrity and honesty. To the staff that sit at the tables in this room, thank you for staying with us through some of these very long meetings. We appreciate the support and the engagement that you've had in answering our questions and helping us find our way to the end. To our staff in our schools, thank you for helping us to get where we are. The community members and the students, for all the hard work and dedication that you have done in achieving the dreams that children are achieving within the Halton District School Board. It's a great board to work, live, and play, and inspire. And I just want everyone to recognize how appreciated they are. So thank you, everyone, for engaging in this, the last meeting of the 2022-2023 year, for some or one, their last meeting ever. We have exhausted our agenda, and I call this meeting adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone, and thank you very much.
Have a great night.